Welcome, everyone. This is our study session. And welcome, Mr. Rich. And we'll let you go first. Did you have anything for pre-meeting?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Let's see. I had the RMMA roundtable, maybe noise roundtable this morning. And they, I don't know when, I believe it was maybe last month or maybe somewhere in between. They decided to table the VFR study, which then brought about the, which is the egress and degress and noise into and out of the airport. And which brought about the discussion on the dues. Because the, one of the main reasons that we approved the dues was for the study and for the consultant. And so it was decided that we keep it since we're not doing the VFR study. We keep the fees currently as they are, which is 3,600 for the year. So will be invoiced later. This city will be invoiced over the street for 3,600 per annual dues and per the IGA bylaws. But the discussion is that they would like to increase dues to 12,000. And that's in my understanding perpetuity, starting next year. And that will help fund the work plan items that are approved by last meeting and could potentially help fund a VFR study on this noise. But one of the consultants that they were going with decided to back out. And I think it, they think it was because it was such a low number. We had about 25,000 set aside, or the group had about 25,000 set aside for the consultant for facilitation. And they ended up backing out. So we lost two studies, the VFR and then the facilitation. So that's part of the reason why they want to increase dues. Now, I mentioned to them that the approval was contingent, us approving 11,410 was a contingent on these two items and for a one-time fee. The conversation today revolved around 12,000 in its perpetuity. However, there are several of us that had concerns with it in perpetuity. So the number 5,000 was thrown out. So it would be a 50% increase, not a 300% increase. And so they're looking, the bylaws say that you need to set your dues by July. So we have about two more sessions to discuss what the dues will be. It sounded like there was very mixed feelings as far as whether it should be the same at 3,600, whether it should be 5,000, or whether it should be 12. So keep in mind that there's a lot of moving parts. But I wasn't comfortable making decision for all of council. I mentioned that I needed to bring it back to all of us since the dynamics on the dues have changed.
And I forget, do we have a staff person that goes to these meetings also?
That was also in person.
I don't know.
I don't think regularly.
Okay. They also talked about, now that you said staff, they also talked about, and let me bring it back to you, because it went roundabout as far as having, one of the work plan items was to have land use as a discussion for all of the jurisdictions. And each jurisdiction would then be responsible for a 10 to 15 minute presentation on land use, like comprehensive plan, what we have scheduled in and around our city. But that kind of went back and forth. So I will follow up with you to see if that's actually, our schedule was July, went down July, but I don't know if they actually are moving forward with that since they were in flux with that as well. And then the, yeah. I think if maybe the next session, we could have a staff member, maybe one or two, it would be helpful just to listen in on the conversation because we talked about land use and how it, how the airport has an aviation easement agreement. I didn't realize that, that they have aviation easement agreements. They can work with city planners to then, to then notify developers and builders that their tenants will be in a flight zone. And so that's also helpful for any incoming residents that will be living surrounding RMMA. So lots of interesting discussion, but there's a lot of moving parts just in that one meeting today. So I can send out kind of a synopsis to see where we want to go, start the discussion as far as, are we comfortable with increasing dues? It does seem like we need to increase dues. I do believe that they need a facilitator. I would be supportive of that, but I'm not quite sure if, at this point, the VFR study is where we would like to go. Yeah.
Did, did any of the members of the group push back as far as like what, tying it to any kind of deliverable instead of just dues? Because I think that was one of the biggest concerns I have is, what are we getting for it?
That's exactly what I told the group. So myself and Arvada representative John Marriott had mentioned that we need actual action items to know, because we're not just going to increase dues to have leftovers and have it sitting there. Because that was the discussion that they want dues to sit there and then we'll figure out how we can best use them. And I didn't feel like that was, I personally, and I said that as a personal matter, I didn't think that was the best use of dollars. And so it was then in discussion with John Marriott, he was in ingredients as far as, maybe that's, maybe it's best to understand the actionable items, the cost around there.
Well, and I don't know if this is something that staff can share back with that group because they have contacts that work with the staffs. But like, I think the things we've heard from our residents, besides obviously noise, which there's only so much they can do about it, that doesn't mean they shouldn't try. But I mean, there's been serious questions about health hazards and stuff like that that I think we should make sure that they tie to some sort of study that either could validate or put it to bed. And if, if we, for me, if we can't do that and say, these are the things that Westminster wants, I don't know why we, we spend the money because that's the whole reason we got involved with it, but.
I think the noise was top of mind for Boulder because they really wanted to focus on that rather than the land use and how that affects noise. So there's a lot of robust discussion as far as land use, whether or not we have more information on that, or whether or not we focus on the noise itself. It seemed like to me that there was a three-part that come of this. One was land use and what all jurisdictions are doing and how we're developing and revitalizing areas. Two, be mindful of who have been there around the airport for 30 plus years. And then three, the noise and how we can, because it, I think what we got to in the last year, the conclusion is, is that flight pass are flight pass and they're regulated by the FAA. And so it's really hard to change flight pass. But when we come to technologies such as building, you know, can you have better window panes? Can you insulate better for, to have reduction of noise? So that is kind of like a discussion, what can we do? Things are set, but what can we do surrounding that might help?
Council Baker?
I'm all for being really part of this, but I'm comfortable with the 3,600 dues because of all the limitations.
Yeah, and that's what we move, I felt comfortable saying that we meet them at 3,600 for the rest of the year, but that we'd have to have a larger discussion as far as increasing in 2023.
Okay, Council Baker, you had brought up comprehensive land use plan and had some questions?
Right, right. And there was a, there was a memo sent out that had the water usage for each kind of thing. And then when we get the comp plan, you change the terms. Why did we change the terms? Like TMD is gone, gone. So there was obviously some reason that you had to change all the categories in the comp plan. And then, of course, because they're changed, just the chart's no good. Doesn't give us a estimation. Plus also, this was a much more precise number than the new categories in the comp plan. So if we're going to make a reasoned judgment on that, we either need to go back to the old categories, or we need to get a new chart for these categories. And we need to know how wide these categories are. And that's going to take more than three hours. So it takes direction from the council.
Correct. And thank you, thank you, counselor. Yes, and the mayor wishes she could poll council and see if there's interest in that. From the staff perspective, we think, we looked at your questions initially, determined they would take more than three hours, that they would inform the council discussion. So I just wanted to make sure that I told council that answering these questions, I think would be helpful for all of council, to see these answers if council so directed us to do the work. And then also in the upcoming study session, counselor staff will walk through what was updated in the draft plan before you, why it was updated, and start to talk to some of your questions also in the study session.
And I don't know that if this is something you could do before the work, but I mean, either way, you are going to switch him to, on Council Baker's point, can you justify and true up the, that measurement versus the new categories and be able to just show, here's the same number, but here's the categories that they're in and out? Because I would be interested to see that.
Councilor Demille?
Just going to say, I don't know if we were trying to change the paradigm of the comp plan, but we before were very precise with the land uses and because it essentially acted like zoning for the community. And these land uses seem to be going in more of a direction where a lot of communities go, where comp plan is more of this more general document. And if we are going to be looking at our land uses as precisely as we have been in relation to water, that's just something for us to realize that these, these broader categories are not going to give us that level of refinement with the water usage. So if that can be somehow addressed as well in this response.
Okay, let me poll council to make sure that you want this word done. Council Baker, yes. Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Yeah.
We've got seven people that would love to hear all the answers.
Excellent. Thank you.
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, my next question is, thank you so much for the answers about 7731. And have we shared that with the media? And have we shared that with the residents? Because I thought those were very positive answers, that one, there is no immediate threat for health and safety.
Before you say anything, remember you had one memo that was confidential.
Right, 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 right. But that was the one before. Were either of these two, was yours a memo this time?
Yeah, thank you, council. All right, so the correspondence that I transmit to city council, how to have it, I, yes, including today, the message, action as attorney-client privileged communication.
Okay.
But to the extent that there's a portion of that message that we would like to include, I think we can work toward that goal if a majority of council is supportive of that. I don't want to be the one to waive the privilege on behalf of my client.
Well, if we could then decide that, and I think it's important to get it to the residents and to get it to the media.
Would you like the attorney and city manager, Andrews, to work on that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Pass it by us? And is everybody okay with that? If they come up with something that we see and is okay, they can go ahead and release? And they don't have to come back to us. Mayor Potem, did you have something? Councilor Isadi, did you have anything tonight?
Yes, so to circle back on the gun proclamation. So the last few weeks, Council Baker and I have been negotiating, I think we went through eight versions of the proclamation and we landed on something that I believe we both completely agree with. And I would like to now poll council mayor for making this official so that we can read this out on the 23rd at the next city council meeting. But this would be a June 3rd proclamation, so we would need that before, so the next council meeting would be the 23rd.
And I'm assuming you're a yes?
Yes.
Councilor Demille?
Yeah.
Mayor Potem?
Yes, but I'd also like to thank both of you for working on this and not letting it be just a yes or no. I think that this is one of those issues where people instantly typecast, if you say, I don't want to go along with this just one proclamation because it doesn't match up with my view of it. You know, there's too much of that in the world. So I appreciate the fact that you guys really worked hard to come up with something we all could agree with.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes, and also I want to echo the great work that was, the collaboration, really appreciated that.
And did I ask you about the, I don't think I came back to you about our last polling for city managers' comments about Knox Court and, okay, thank you. And I apologize. Councilor Emmett, whoever you are.
Yes, I also want to echo my colleagues. I think this is an excellent example of how we can bridge on differences. And it's, I think, one of my concerns originally was that it wasn't, it wasn't inclusive in its entirety, right? And so that's kind of where I did, I admit, I was very, was a very hard no until there was discussion as far as what it could be. So I appreciate you two working together and just bridging that divide as far as what we could all, all seven of us maybe agree on. So thank you.
I'm assuming you're a yes after all your hard work. I too just want to say thank you to you two, because I certainly didn't have the time to even echo in. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And you've got seven people that look like it's going to move forward nicely.
And then I could just add, you know, I just want to thank all of you as well because a proclamation like this is, it goes beyond the content and more, to your point, it sends a signal to the community that this council can compromise and meet middle ground and listen to all voices, right? So thank you all for that.
And let's see, I forget where I was at. Do you have anything else?
Oh, and we walked last week. So small business, small business week was last week and the mayor and I hit 24 businesses.
In the next day, I hit 30 more. And people, and the second day, we had rain. So people were even more happy to see us in the rain. It was sort of funny. But gosh, we, we have so many hidden treasures in this city. And worldwide, this headquarters, it just is fascinating. It, I always get energized. So I, I didn't know, I thought we had done less than, than the day before. And she said, no, you got 30 done. So that was nice. But.
To get rain, all we have to do is you walk?
Pardon?
To get rain in most districts, all we have to do is you walk?
I don't know, but it was fun. City manager, oh, Councilor Demille?
So I'll just let you know, so I attended the Dr. Cog work session this past, I guess it was last week. And the, the focus was on just where our next steps were with integrating the housing with transportation. Nothing was resolved in this meeting. It was more, hey, do you think we should develop a, you know, a housing and transportation coordination plan? You know, is that a good next step? And it seems like most people were kind of okay with fleshing that out. And then the, one of the interesting things that they did was take a look at Metrovision and kind of did some sensitivity testing on where growth would happen and how that would impact just meeting our overall measures of trying to reduce overall traffic and things like that. And so they looked at centers versus infill, which was, the infill was a little more distributed, right? Versus the centers being more focused development. And the centers achieved a better result overall. I'm not going to go into a huge amount of detail. I think that's something though, that we should, you know, maybe, I don't know how to best bring it to council, maybe in a, you know, study session kind of timeframe, where we can talk a little bit more. It just, it can help frame out what Dr. Cog's looking to get feedback on. And then we can talk about how we as a council want to send a message to how Westminster feels. So more to come on that. You, I did forward you the presentation. So you should all have that as well as staff, so.
City manager?
Not for pre-meeting, thank you.
And there's Seymour?
No, I was coughing and so it looked like I was bobbing my head. So apologies.
No problem. Anybody else? Mr. Door? Sprinkle?
Nope.
All right, let's take whatever breaks we need and meet back at the desk. Welcome to tonight's meeting of May ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Councillor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Councillor Normella.
Here.
Did I say councillor Emmons?
Nope.
Okay, councillor Emmons. I apologize.
Present.
And councillor Seymour.
Here.
That's okay. Um, consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting for April twenty-fifth. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting as presented.
Mayor, mayor. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That brings us to specials times tonight. Oh, we need a vote for councillor Seymour. Be remote. Mayor Protem.
Um, I would move to approve councillor Seymour working remote this evening.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve councillor Seymour to be working from home tonight. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we come to a great time of proclamations and celebrations. And the first one up are my favorite youth advisory panel. Join me up front. I call them my yappers, but come on up front. And if our leaders are with, please come forward. We have Kristen and Julia with us. They are the team leaders of this wonderful group. And this group has had a few leaders, right? That have come and gone, but you stay. You have done a wonderful job as leaders. And I love every meeting I come to. So let me start with Julie, or Kristen, and let you introduce yourself and then we'll.
My name is Kristen Helm. I am the team services librarian at a college called Public Library. I've been on you for about four months now.
Hello, I'm Blake Blue. I go to Stargate School and I'm in eleventh grade.
Hi, I'm Eva. I'm also in eleventh grade.
Hi, I'm Kylie Nazarian. I go to Pomona High School.
Hi, I'm Julia Cassam, our open space development special.
Like Edith.
Hi, I'm Angie Dooley. I'm in tenth grade and I go to Stargate School.
Hi, I'm Todd Beer Sandu. I go to Belinda Christian School.
I'm Debbie Sandu and I go to Belinda Christian School.
Hi, I'm Emily. I go to Belinda Christian School and I'm in tenth grade.
Hi, my name's Alondra Mendoza. I'm in tenth grade and I'm a student at Westminster High School.
Hi, I'm Irving Mendoza. I go to Westminster High School and I'm a junior.
These folks are so special and we're honoring our seniors tonight. Haley and Kylie, I'm sorry, Kylie and Yuri. He would be there. And he, he's our one that teaches Japanese online. Even when he had to go to Japan to visit one of his relatives, he took everything and was as if he never wasn't here. So these kids have so much in them. Kylie, Kylie, I want them to hear your story because they will not. I would ask you what you think she might do on her side life, but you'll never guess. So tell us about that and some of the honors you've received.
I'm a drag racer at Van Amir Speedway. And I have won one championship through the track and then three division championships. And I'm going to Colorado Christian University. And I have three scholarships coming along.
Present. And each one has a story to tell. So when you get into twelfth grade and we're having to say goodbye, it's a long story. So we have a proclamation for all of you tonight. Whereas the city council of the city of Westminster believes our youth should share with their community leaders the responsibility in addressing their needs, desires, challenges and issues, in molding their own futures. And whereas the city values its youth and desires to advance and promote their special needs and interests, and therefore created the Westminster Youth Advisory Panel on September thirteenth, nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas currently the panel has thirteen members appointed for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And whereas it's important to acknowledge the contributions made by panel members. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby recognize and extend appreciation to the following youth advisory panel members who are currently serving on the youth advisory panel, representing their schools and Westminster youth. And you heard from all of them and their, your names I could never recreate except your first ones. Signed this ninth day of May, two thousand twenty-two, Nancy McNally. It's an honor to have gotten to know you during the year. I can't wait to be with the rest of you. You're all staying on, right, Fifth Man? You better. And I'm going to allow you to, because I know this has been a big deal for this group and you have great marketing skills. So tell this group who may have students at home how they can register to be on our group.
You can register on the city website. We have a special page for youth advisory panels. There is a part where you can register for kids from like eighth grade to twelfth grade.
Do it often and soon. Do we have a reporter that needs a picture? Tell us how you want it. We're so big.
I have my guests from, that are here to accept the older American proclamation. I'm going to have you go ahead and introduce yourself. Right by you.
Good evening, my name is Chris Lynn. I'm the CEO at Seniors Resource Center. And I so appreciate the invitation to accept this proclamation on behalf of SRC and the older folks in our communities. SRC's mission is to provide all the wraparound services for folks who choose to age in place, whatever that looks like for them. So we provide in-home care, adult day respite care, chores services and so on. So again, our, the older adults in our community need a lot of support these days. That need is growing exponentially and we just so appreciate the support.
Absolutely. So what this is, this proclamation, I'll give you a little bit of background. So when Older Americans Month was established in nineteen sixty-three, seventeen million living Americans had reached sixty-five, aged sixty-five. And about a third of the older Americans lived in poverty. There were few programs to meet their needs. Interest in older Americans and their concerns was growing. A meeting in April nineteen sixty-three between President John F. Kennedy and members of the National Council of Senior Citizens led to designating May as the Senior Citizens Month, which is the prelude to Older Americans Month. And so as you probably know, our population was baby boomers. That's one of the biggest populations that is now aging. So this is a area in life that hopefully we all make it to. But it certainly isn't something that we shouldn't have almost two years. Great organization and Chris is a great leader for them and everything he said doesn't do him justice though. Because the, the support that that group gives to our seniors and community in the metro area is amazing. Those folks often deal with being stuck in isolation in groups like Senior Resource Center. I'm sure that that doesn't happen if folks can stay longer in their own living environment. A lot of people hopefully is, they pass to the other side, which is what I think I would prefer to do, to be able to be in my own home. I know many seniors want that. And so I'll give a shameless plug. If you have dollars you want to donate, this is a great organization. Most nonprofits were hit hard by COVID. It certainly had double, double duty work during that time. So with that, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Westminster includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas older Americans provide economic and social benefits to every community in which they live and enrich the city of Westminster. And whereas the city of Westminster is committed to supporting the older adults as they take charge of their health, explore new opportunities and activities and focus on independence. And whereas older Americans receiving services while living at home have a greater chance of maintaining and engaged in high quality of life. And whereas Senior Resource Center's vision is to ensure the quality of life through consolation of services, information, advocacy and leadership to meet the needs of the community. And whereas Senior Resource Center alongside with the community partners are dedicated to enhancing the lives and independence of older Americans, which in turn enhances the quality of our community as a whole. Now therefore, I Nancy McNally, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim May two thousand twenty-two to be Older Americans Month. And urge every resident of Westminster to take time during the month to recognize older adults as a vital part of our community. I am this day, ninth of May, two thousand twenty-two.
He's even got marks there. Thank you. Next is councillor Emmons.
Could I have the staff for Economic Development?
They're shy tonight.
Well, no, I have the distinct honor of reading this proclamation on behalf of councillor Seymour. He is remote, but I'm doing this in his place. So the Economic Development Department, so important and critical to our city. So thank you for the work that you do every single day. It's important that, important element in developing a vibrant city. They work to increase jobs and the quality of life for residents. This department works to attract and retain high quality jobs, leading to vibrant neighborhoods, often supporting our small businesses, which are the backbone of our city and our local economy. So thank you for what you do. I'm going to go ahead and do that. First of all, I'm going to introduce all of you. I don't want to get right into it. We can all know who you are. So I apologize for my speeding there, but go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Lindsay Kimball, Director of Economic Development.
Good evening, I'm Julianne Murray. I'm the new executive assistant to Ms. Kimball and the team.
I'm Molly Taylor. I'm the Housing Coordinator in Economic Development.
Bonnie Lewenberger with the PDBG Foundation.
Stephanie Koller, I'm the Economic Development Division.
Shelby Woods, Small Business Management Analyst.
Anna Shuri, Downtown North City Senior Development Manager.
And John Burke, also downtown Westminster, Development and Construction Manager.
Thank you. First of all, we would all, on behalf of the entire team, like to say thank you to councillor Emmons, mayor, mayor Protem and all the councillors. Thank you so much for recognizing us this evening. IEDC created Economic Development Week. So all of our, our fellow economic developers here and across the world could have a moment where we can help folks understand what we do. I know my family still, I think, is a little in the dark about, about what I do. But this is an opportunity for us to share with everyone about all of the great work, helping small businesses, as you said, helping with workforce development, with redevelopment, adaptive reuse, with job creation and job attraction, and overall creating a better environment for everyone. So we're very honored. I also just want to say thank you to all of our regional partners in economic development. This is to honor them as well. That would be our Jeffco EDC, Adams County Regional Economic Partnership, the SBDC, the Westminster Chamber, the Metro Denver Economic Development Corporation, OEDIT and many more throughout the state. We're very appreciative for their support. And also, we couldn't do any of this without the Prime Minister. So we want to give a big thanks to them. We're here to just support them, help them grow, help them create jobs, help them invest in our community. So we're very grateful for this honor today. And also would like to say thank you to, of course, everyone on the team who you just met. They're wonderful. This isn't everyone, but most of everyone. We are small but mighty. And also want to say thank you to all the departments throughout the city. We work with every single one of them and without their collaboration and teamwork, we couldn't be successful. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for what you do for all of us residents and businesses. Whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining and expanding jobs. by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurs, entrepreneurism in order to help establish next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of business support programs, developing public-private partnerships, and focus on building relationships within the business community. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their region. And whereas economic developers do important work, which supports expanding career opportunities and making life better. And whereas economic developers work in the city of Westminster, Colorado, now therefore I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of May 9th through May 13th, 2022, as Economic Development Week. Thank you.
Do we have, well, a representative from Falun Dafa here? Well, this makes it easier, doesn't it? I mean, a little bit of background. Falun Dafa is also known as Falun Gong. It's a Buddhist school of really meditation practice for the body and mind, really transcends cultural boundaries, and really contributes to a healthier, more really harmonious society as its really philosophy is centered around the, well, the universal principles of truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance. Since its really introduction, more than 100 million people in over 100 countries have really benefited from it. This is also a reminder, when we have one of the wonderful fruits of the liberal democracy in which we live, is that we can recognize people from other, I mean, the traditions, without fear, intolerance, or anything else like that. It's a wonderful benefit that our society has. For proclamation. Whereas, since its really public introduction in 1992 by, I mean, Mr. Lee Hanzi, Falun Dafa has brought health and peace of mind to over 100 million people around the world. And whereas Falun Dafa, also known as Falun Gong, is an ancient practice of exercise, meditation, and study that promotes good spirit and mental health. And whereas Falun Dafa is based on the principles of Zen, Chan, Ren, which are truthfulness, compassion, and forbearance, as the virtue of the universe. And whereas Falun Dafa transcends cultural and racial boundaries, and really contributes to, to, to the universal dream of peaceful, tolerant, and a more compassionate society. And whereas Falun Dafa is practiced all over, all over Colorado by many citizens of all ages. Now, therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do, do really hereby proclaim May 13th, 2022, to be Falun Dafa Day. Sign this 9th day of May, 2022. And some people get a month, and some people get a week, and some people get a day.
Councillor Yazadi is next.
Can I get all the Public Works folks there, up here? The whole crew is here. Because there are 158? What's the staff number? Is that the number? 154? I'd let you all introduce yourselves first.
Great. So I'm Sarah Borgers. I'm the interim Public Works Director. We're excited to be here tonight to celebrate National Public Works Week next week. And this is a celebration that's celebrated by Public Works Department all over the nation, although I have to say, I think we here at Westminster have the best Public Works Department. I'm not biased, though. So I'm going to leave it at that. This is just a subset of the more than 150 people that keep, keep our water, waste water in streets safe for us every day. And I'm going to have you also say your, your job description, or not your job description, your title, because it's amazing how many different people and types of work go into making water, waste water in streets safe. So I'll let you.
I'm Bill Moore. Work out of Big Dry Creek, today's Water Department. Been there for 17 years.
I'm Stephanie Blacker. I'm the Action Utilities Year Manager, over 15 years.
Roger Harshman. I'm the Water Distribution Superintendent, and I've been here 38 years.
Andrea Song. I'm Utilities Operations Division Manager, and I've been here five months.
Hi, my name is Dan Chandamart. I'm a street operations foreman. Worked in utilities for 26 years.
Hello, I'm Kirby Olmeyer, Street Operations Manager. I've been at the city for 26 years.
Hello, I'm Brock Huford, Pavement Management Coordinator in the Street Division. I've been at the city for 24 years.
Hello, Matt Buono. You're the Lead Distribution Construction Foreman. I've been with the city almost 18 years.
Hi, I'm Josh Nims. I'm the interim Water Resources and Quality Division Manager, and I've been with the city for 18 years also.
I'm Tanner Kraft. I'm the Plant Superintendent of Big Dry Creek. I've been here two years.
Hi, I'm Tom Scribner. I'm the Drinking Water Treatment Superintendent for the two water plants, and I've been here 38 years and counting. Thank you all so much. And I wrote down some numbers. So Councillor Baker is not the only one who likes numbers. I love numbers. I wanted to make sure that the amount of work that this, that your department does is exemplified and communicated to the city. So there are, all of you and the rest of you, over 150 of you, you maintain over 1,100 miles of streets, 18,000-plus street signs, snow removal, ice removal, 530 miles of drinking water pipes, 5,000 hydrants, and much, much more. So just from the bottom of my heart, and you work through nights, you work through weekends, you work through a pandemic. So the work you do is invaluable to the city, and I wanted to just say that. And so thank you, just a round of applause for them real quick before I... I will read the proclamation right now. Whereas public works and utility services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' lives. And whereas support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works and utilities and programs concerning the maintenance of water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and snow removal operations. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works and utilities employees. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel... Who don't, microphone? But who... Mayday, mayday? Okay. Who staff the Public Works and Utilities Department are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And now therefore, I Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. In the city of Westminster, and call upon the people of Westminster to acquaint themselves with the challenges and opportunities involved in providing our public works and utilities, and to recognize the contributions that public works and utilities employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Sign this 9th day of May, 2022. Thank you all so much.
Next up, we have our service awards for our employees. If you brought somebody from your family with you, a friend, a neighbor, bring them up with you. We'd like to recognize them too for what they, how they've supported you. So Councillor Baker, you have the 20 years.
I would like to have really Tyson of the Camerzel and his family join me on stage. Tyson? Tyson Camerzel, Mechanic One for Parks. Everybody has a fix, because it breaks. And I'll read a little more background. Of the Tyson of the Camerzel was hired as a seasonal in 1997 to help in the Parks Mechanic Shop. He then moved to a large construction company, working on heavy equipment and trucks. Tyson, Tyson returned to the city of Westminster in 2002 as a full-time, as a full-time equipment mechanic, and then, I mean, a Mechanic One in 2018. He has had the opportunity to work with a great many people, and has attended various trainings to, to stay current on equipment and on repairs. He has also obtained many different really certifications over the years. Tyson has been married for 22 years and has two daughters, who he likes to spend time with. And in his spare time, Tyson also enjoys rag racing of the fabrication and home and yard projects.
We hope at Bandamere Steep Speedway.
I would like to have really... Our next honoree is Vico, Vincent Vico, who's not attending. He was really first hired in 1994 as a really seasonal employee with Parks and Open Space. And after graduation from the University of Northern Colorado with a really bachelor's degree in sociology, and with emphasis on criminal justice, and a minor in human rehabilitation, he began to pursue his, I mean, the career as a, as a probation officer with Arapahoe County, and, and really quickly realized that wasn't, I mean, the career path he wanted to take. In 2002, Vinnie was hired on as a Parks worker for our Open Space Division. In 2006, he was, was promoted to Parks Crew Leader, where he began to flourish in his leadership skills and core values, to really help provide the best product for our customers and organizations. 12 years later, in 2018, Vinnie was promoted to Parks Foreperson, where he manages, supports, and coaches our Parks Recreation Library's Contract Services Coordinator, Contract Services Technician, Hydro System Specialist, Playground Safety Specialist, and Parks Operation Team. A few, a few accomplishments over the years include really supporting our Parks Team with really implementing standard operational procedure and management plans, and helping with, I mean, the development of the Jessica Ridgeway Park, Downtown Park, Westminster Station Park Nature Play, and really implementing Parks Playgrounds and replacement.
Didn't have a cheat sheet of how many for each one. I think there's one more. One more.
And, well, the two becomes three. I'd like to have Mr. Blake of Ramsey join me on stage with any guests he brought.
Blake Ramsey, I'm the Parks Superintendent. So I work with Vinnie and Tyson, supporting daily operations, small capital projects.
I mean, Blake of the Ramsey was really hired in 2002 as a golf worker at Walnut Creek Golf Preserve shortly after finishing college. He is, he is really currently the Parks and Horticulture Superintendent, really supporting the Parks, you know, division. Blake is very, is very proud of the many recent accomplishments of the Parks, you know, division, and most, and most notably, the work done in water conservation and park and park sustainability efforts citywide. Blake is also proud of his work with the Golf Westminster Team, spending 15 years, split, okay, between both of these golf, you know, facilities. Blake has been married to his wonderful wife Leah for 17 years. They have really two sons, ages 13 and six, and a daughter, age 11. He enjoys spending time with his family, skiing, fishing, golfing, and supporting the love of sports that makes his kids, that his kids have. Sorry about that.
I've scoured, oh, there he is. I scoured and scoured, and you were hiding. Tim Reed, come on down. Couldn't find you. I was ready to spend your money for you. Well, get him up here, family. I'll come and get you. I've been known to do that. Everybody.
This is my wife Cheryl, my oldest daughter Abigail, my nephew Bethany, and nephew Gavin. Gavin.
Gavin, I'm so excited that you came to see us. Thank you. This is an honor to give, 25-year award. Besides getting a pin and a plaque, they also get $2,500. And she won't go hiking with it. Tim Reed was hired as a police officer in 1997. He has served the Police Department, the City of Westminster community, in many roles and has been part of many teams in the past 25 years. Tim has served in a variety of roles, including team, a field training instructor, public information officer, detective sergeant, school resource officer, sergeant, and commander. Tim now leads the Technical Services Section, providing support to police and communication operations. Tim is also team leader for the Jefferson County Child Abduction Response Team, founding member, member of the Westminster Public Safety Recognition Foundation, master TASER instructor, and Westminster's TASER Program Coordinator. I didn't get tased in class. And founding member of the Citywide Facility Security Team. Tim is particularly skilled at problem solving and bringing people together towards goals. Most importantly, Tim's network and community connections are an example of service with spirit. Tim has been married for 28 years to his college sweetheart Cheryl, and they have two daughters. He enjoys outdoors and camping with family and friends. Thank you for your service. Cheryl and I go back. She was on the team for Team Shay when he was at Rocky Mountain Children's Hospital. So this family is special in my heart.
Could I have Deborah Sinecki, please? Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to allow you to introduce yourself and your guests.
Debbie Sinecki, I work in records. I'm a records technician for 30 years.
I'm Dave, I'm her husband. I was retired from the Westminster Police Department several years ago after 40 years of the police.
If you heard her, she said I thought it was you. I will say, thank you for your work and your service. I had the opportunity to go through the Westminster Citizens League Academy and I did not get tased. So that is an opportunity in that, in that academy, but thank you for your service. It's appreciated. I'm going to read a little bit about Deborah and her work at Westminster. Deborah is currently a police records technician in the Police Department. She provides technical support to police and fire personnel. Debbie provides direct daily services to the public and other criminal justice agencies throughout the state and nation. She has passed and maintained certification through CBI and the FBI to send and receive messages and perform data entry, which includes missing persons, stolen vehicles, and stolen articles. She enters, confirms, and counsels warrants and places holds on one person. Debbie is a Colorado Certified Records Technician, holding a master certificate. This is awarded to individuals after many months of testing. Debbie is, has received the Teams in Action Award two times. Debbie enjoys many hobbies, including scrapbooking, gardening, water, sports, and camping. She has 13 grandchildren who keep her very busy, which includes four shows, four HCU hockey games, high school baseball games, art shows, and tracking one of her grandsons while he is flying. When there is time and money, she really enjoys travel. Well, thank you so much and congratulations.
All right, I have 35 years. Dave Makrans, are you here? Hi, Dave. You have anybody else?
Paparazzi.
You're, you have to come up, I'm sorry. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi Westminster, my name is Dave Makrans. I'm the Training and Special Operations Chief for the Fire Department. I'd like to introduce my son and my wife, firefighters.
There it is. That's how you say your name. All right, so Dave began his career as a firefighter in May 1987. In May 1990, he was promoted to paramedic and then to fire lieutenant in May 2004. In April 2012, he took a lateral transfer to the position of Field Training Officer, transitioning from his line duties to working days in fire department training. In 2014, Dave led Training and Safety as the Training Coordinator. His position was upgraded to the Battalion Chief level in 2017, and Dave now functions as the Fire Department's Training and Special Operations Chief. Dave is very active within the organization and progressively seeks out new programs and projects that better serve the community. Dave's major accomplishments have been in the area of rescue services, training, and recruitment. He is currently the Chair of the Colorado North Central Region All Hazards Rescue Committee and Department Chief for members on the Colorado Urban Search and Rescue Task Force. As a member of the USNR team, which is the Urban Search and Rescue Colorado Task Force, Dave has responded to six national disasters in the states of Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, Texas, and Louisiana. Dave has also been instrumental in the creation of two regional rescue services, the Metro Dive Rescue Team and the North Area Technical Rescue Team, where he has served as coordinator of both teams. Dave's enthusiasm in rescue services has carried his talent into the area of training, where he has been teaching rescue, fire, hazardous materials, leadership, and safety classes at local, regional, state, and national levels for over 25 years. Dave's leadership and training benefits more than our organization. He was the president of the Colorado Fire Training Officers Association for four years. The leadership that Dave has displayed in rescue and training services has helped in the area of recruitment and hiring. Dave assisted in the creation of a regional testing consortium that decreased costs to the city. Wait for it. And increased the candidate pool by 20%. He chaired the Dr. Cog and Colorado Firefighter Testing Consortium for eight years. Dave's most recent accomplishments have been in the participation of the North Area Fire Services. They've helped create the North Area Fire Academy, NAFHA, coordinating two academies as the Academy Chief. NAFHA is now on its 11th Regional Academy. Has also helped with the creation of the North Area Company Officer Fundamental Course to train fire service leaders and the North Area Technical Rescue Academy. Dave is currently working on a new North Area Fire Engineer Academy that is being rolled out this year to provide training to new drivers and pump operators. When Dave is not working for the city, which doesn't sound like there was much time, he spends time with his family, Kristen, Josh, and Jake, horses, flying, and playing hockey. The question is, have, have you trained your son? Well, thank you so much for all of the time and energy and the creation that you have given to the community.
So I don't believe my person is here for 40 years.
There should be a sheet that, right.
So Richard Wells will not be attending tonight, but he is the 40-year recipient. He began his career as a volunteer firefighter with the City of Westminster in March 1980 and obtained permanent employment in March 1982. Rich has promoted through, has been promoted through the ranks of firefighter, paramedic, and lieutenant, and moved into his current position of fire captain, Technical Services Coordinator on January 1st, 2003. Rich's duties include procurement, deployment, and management of fire-specific software and computer hardware. His position is also key in functioning as a fire department's liaison with dispatch operations, IT, graphic information system, addressing, city attorney's office, and HIPAA compliance. Rich maintains his firefighting, fire code inspector, and paramedic certifications and actively participates in the training of crews. When in the field and when the opportunity presents itself, he can still be seen treating patients. Off-duty, Rich enjoys outdoor activities, including skiing and mountain.
Again, thank you to all of you, to your families. Thank you for letting them come and be with us during the day and allowing them to help our city. To all of you that have received an award proclamation, it is okay to leave now before we start the meeting. That brings us to public comment. At this time, we don't have anyone signed up. We don't have any.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we do have two late signups.
Oh, okay. And no voicemails or emails. So who do we have signed up?
The first speaker is Tim Peg.
Welcome.
Thanks. I would like to address some comments made during the recent town halls by Mayor Pro Tem Demott and Counselor Seymour. Mayor Pro Tem Demott expressed sympathy for homeless folks who are working hard to make ends meet but are just shy of making rent. So they're doing things like living in their cars and couch-serving with friends and relatives. He also expressed concern about rising home prices, which make it more difficult for people to transition from renting to owning their home. I share these concerns. In both cases, the fix is the same thing: build more housing. That's why I was disappointed to hear Mayor Pro Tem say that he wanted less administrative approval of development and more discretionary approval before council. Discretionary review slows the development approval process and therefore makes housing more scarce. The end result is that folks living on the margins remain on the margins longer. So I am urging the Mayor Pro Tem to change his perspective. I'd also like to address Counselor Seymour's concern about the slow-paced development approvals and how the cost of slow approvals gets passed on to consumers. Whether it's consumer or residential development, I agree. And in both cases, a more free market is likely to result in lower costs for consumers. I urge this whole council to work together to come up with a solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Good evening. Couple of things. A member of the community reached out to me and asked, why was the shred-a-thon canceled? Has it been, and if so, why?
There was a conflict.
Excuse me?
There was a conflict between Iron Mountain and the Crime Stoppers that puts it together.
So are we rescheduling it, or is it just, okay? Just asking, like I say, for a member of the community. Again, I'm going to ask about the Ethics Board. That's something that this council and this city needs to take seriously and put in play. Now, I brought this up two council meetings ago, that's just a day shy of a month. Had to bring it up again two weeks ago. I did have a response from Counselor Seymour, and his response came in the form of an email. I'm sure you all received it. It was CC'd to you. He states that it, this is his opinion and not those of the council, but yet, Rich or Counselor Seymour, you really didn't state an opinion. I did also have a chance to speak with Counselor Baker just momentarily before the town hall and got some input from him. The rest of you, crickets. Crickets. Unacceptable. When people ask you a direct question, I think they should be entitled to an answer. You work for us. Next, let's move to last Monday night's study session. In the first part of the presentation by Mr. Horn. Counselor Namela chose to call one of her fellow counselors a nerd. I find that non-appropriate. I find that non-professional, and I find that non-ethical. All the more reason that we should look into an Ethics Board. Nerd is not an acceptable term under any, any circumstances. You're stereotyping people. Your counselors earn or deserve as much respect as you think you deserve. Very distasteful. That being said, in addition to when the comment was made, several of the other counselors got a chuckle out of it. I found that most inappropriate also. If you're not sure who it was, go back and listen to the video or watch the video. Inappropriate. That being said, perhaps Counselor Namela should undergo some sensitivity draining or sensitivity glasses so, so that, so that she better understands what it means to be a counselor. I'm open to a response to any of that from any of you at any time. I'm sure you all have my email or have access to it. If not, the majority of you have my phone number. Again, I ask about an Ethics Board. I don't expect crickets. It's not just for you, it's for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last speaker I have signed up. If there's anyone in the audience that didn't sign up but would like to speak, now's the time. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, counselors. My name's Craig Russell. I work and live here in the City of Westminster. And this time I want to talk to you about something a little bit different. I would like to talk to you about affordable housing. We've obviously had a lot of discussions and people here presently that are concerned about it, and I think we all are. I kind of wonder, when we're talking about affordable housing, are we really talking about how much it costs, how obtainable it is, the quality of the housing that we're getting, and the quantity of the housing that we have? These are a large amount of things to consider and try and digest and put together. So I know that council has a very hard and long road to try and appease everybody on these things. I would like to mention, or at least put out there, that I think most of your affordable housing that you housing that you have in Westminster comes from your smaller landlords. The moms and pops that have rented out their houses, their duplexes, their fourplexes and stuff like that. Someone who's inherited a house from their parents or something like that that lives here in Westminster and rents it out. I think that is the niche where we are getting the most affordable housing for people that live here in Westminster. So I just want to take that into consideration that the big, large wheelhouse corporations and very, very large complexes, they're there, I believe, primarily for greed, to make as much money as they can as quickly as they can. Whereas the owners and residents of Westminster who've lived here a long time are renting out their private dwellings, they're the ones that are giving and offering presently probably the most affordable housing in Westminster. I just want you to kind of keep that in mind as we're looking at affordable housing, quality housing, affordable and obtainable, that, in my opinion, humble opinion, that is where it's most affordable. So just kind of keep that in mind as we're making rules and regulations to inspire and keep those people in the field. Thank you.
Thank you. See, no one else. That brings us to Report of City Officials. City Manager Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to begin my manager's comments tonight by acknowledging the members of our community, staff, and particularly the Youth Advisory Panel who joined us here tonight. It's very uplifting to see and hear all of the different ways we come together to serve our community. And we are grateful to have the opportunity to acknowledge their respective contributions through these proclamations. And thank you all for your engagement and service to our community. Serving our community is what our work is all about. Tonight, I'm bringing forward a significant reorganization of staffing that will allow us to be more closely aligned to the city's new vision, mission, and strategic plan. In addition to the $1.4 million investment of American Rescue Plan Act funds to help the police department retain officers and professional staff that City Council approved a few weeks ago, tonight, I'm presenting City Council with the proposed $2.2 million reallocation of funds by eliminating a significant number of salaried positions to fund critical city programs and services in time for summer. This reallocation of funding will help us better address homelessness, bolster our police department's ability to respond to residents experiencing mental health crises, enhance the support for our police officers so they can spend more time in the field, and increase the level of funding for streets maintenance by over $1 million a year. The City Council's support, the proposed elimination of eight salaried positions in the City Manager's Office and Innovation and Communication Division, as well as two department heads, one division manager, and two policy and budget positions, will free up funds for much-needed resources to address critical areas of service in the city, resulting in significantly increased service levels to our community with no additional funding. It is, in effect, a belt-tightening of our leadership structure to put the money where it is needed. And with that, Mayor, I conclude my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everybody, for showing up this evening and sharing your viewpoint. I want to go ahead and address Mr. Palmer's ask for a new board. Ethics is defined for this council, is defined in the charter that was made by people in the city that it was made up by. So I think that we have plenty of rules and regulations on the council and the city. I don't see the benefit in an Ethics Board, if you want the honest truth from me, Mr. Palmer, because we have rules and regulations that this governing body already has to adhere to. If we need additional rules or regulations, or you can find a place where you think that's not being met, we certainly can address those. But I don't think that an additional board is needed. Furthermore, I appreciate you sharing your points of view. However, I have to say that I don't agree with the attack on Councillor Nermella for saying the word nerd. I can't tell you how often I have said nerd in one of our meetings, lightheartedly jokingly about myself or one of my colleagues, because we're political, local government nerds. That's what we are. And I appreciate when people bring some humor to what is a hard job. And so I hope that the group can continue to act in a lighthearted manner when we're doing our work. Otherwise, we don't do as good a work. I think when we're having a good time getting along with each other, we do a far better job. So I would appreciate just thinking outside of the box that maybe it wasn't a lighthearted manner.
Councillor Emmons?
Thank you. Just to kind of dovetail off my colleague, I feel a little bit obligated to say something since the comment was directed at me for being a transportation nerd. And to that, I own, because I have been in that career for about 10 years. And it's always an opportunity, an educational moment, when we can take time to understand what we've personally been through in our careers and/or personal life to lend to the conversation. I might as well be able to be saying that Councillor Nermella is a planner nerd. But it's a term that I didn't take offense to, that I think that in our protocols as a council body, we made it a point to have a level of humor when we're making tough policy decisions. So just to address that, Mr. Palmer, thank you for your comments and concerns on that. But I just wanted to address that I didn't take it offensively. I can see, and we go back to the conversation, having hard conversations, bridging the divide. I think this is a perfect example, another opportunity where we can just show as a community that we're bridging that divide, if there ever is one, but making sure that we are building the relationship instead of dividing. So, thank you.
Councillor Seymour, I don't know how you're supposed to tell me you want to talk, so I'm just offering if you want to.
Thank you, Mayor. Good timing. I was just unmuting. Two things. First, I appreciate my colleagues allowing me to work remotely. I have isolated myself. COVID came up and bit me, and I didn't want to put anyone else at risk from that standpoint, too. So thank you for allowing this. Also, I wish to give support to Councillor Nermella. The, this board, when we're sitting there, especially in the side room, as Mayor Protem talked about, making hard decisions, sometimes a little bit of humor doesn't hurt. And everyone on here, this board, is a big person. And I think if they were offended, they would bring that forward. So I want to thank Sarah, Councillor Nermella, for her comments that night, because they were spot-on. And I, too, have called Councillor Emmons a transportation nerd myself, so I am guilty as well. So I'm in full support of my colleague. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Izadi?
Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you, Mr. Palmer, for your comments. I would like to pile on with the support for our colleague, Councillor Nermella. And actually, just looked up the definition. There are multiple, so with words, right? There are multiple definitions of every word. And the way I see the word nerd, not to rhyme on purpose there, is actually a badge of honor. You know, quite often, as in this society, we tend to demonize intellectualism and expertise sometimes. And the word nerd, the secondary definition of the word nerd says, "Engage in or discuss a technical field obsessively or with great attention to detail." That's in the dictionary.
We're not here for-
There is no primary, sir.
Back and forth.
But my point is, that is the spirit of how Councillor Nermella said that term. It wasn't in the derogatory, which would be, you know, as you described it there. So I just wanted to back her on that, too. I think it was the secondary meaning, and it's fine to be smart in something. And I think we need to embrace it and stop demonizing and stigmatizing intellectualism. My second point is that tonight, in the pre-meeting, this council just passed 7-0, a gun proclamation, and you'll hear it in a couple of weeks.
We polled, we polled.
We polled, sorry. We polled, a 7-0 poll. And I just wanted to give huge gratitude and props to all seven of us for collaborating. I think, so as I said in the pre-meeting, this should send a signal to our community that all voices will be heard, that we hear you, that we sympathize with you, that we can actually reach compromise, find common ground, meet in the middle on a multitude of topics. And just wanted to say thank you to council for that.
Councillor Baker?
Well, the primary definition of nerd is not an attractive one. I was in the meeting, and I didn't think it was meant in a mean-spirited manner, but Mr. Palmer is absolutely correct that nerd is a dismissive, minimizing comment. Number two, we were given a report by the City Manager on a question that we couldn't answer at our town hall, on the status of 7731 Knox Court, but also the neighborhood. And it was a very positive report, that wheels are turning, actions and motions have been approved at the state of Colorado level, that there is safety in that neighborhood, that the neighbors are not at risk, even though it's been more than two months of true misery for the people who live here. And with the criminal investigation that had to proceed and preservation of evidence and with all the regulations and really requirements we had to meet, I wanted to tell the people who live in that neighborhood that this is going to be resolved very soon. And speaking of neighborhoods, as I was working in my lawn this week, I was really struck by, we have individual houses, but when you add up all the houses in a neighborhood, the sum is more than the total of those individual houses. Neighborhoods are a real thing. They are a valuable thing. They are of the reflection of the cumulative efforts of the people who live in that neighborhood. We all know that. We all know safe neighborhoods. We all know desirable neighborhoods. We all know attractive neighborhoods. And that's what we really need to be striving to bring about in Westminster. It's not that we haven't been there. We've been there many times, multiple times, because it's an ongoing effort. It's a work and effort. And the new water rates we have are a step in that direction. Because the new water rates we have will give hope to the people who've had challenges, I mean financially, to maintain their small share of a beautiful neighborhood. And when we complete the rest of the way with the water reductions, they'll be even better. Thank you.
Councillor Nermella, I'm going to go before you to go. I just wanted to remind everybody, Thursday at 11:30, you can be outside, across the street, in front of our sculptures over at the Police and Fire Department, because we will have National Police Officer Week and have a little ceremony. Any public is welcome to come. Ethics Board. Mr. Palmer, thank you for bringing it up. I haven't had time to think about it, because we are knee-deep in a City Manager search. We are knee-deep in all of the things you've seen with our study sessions that are critical to everything going on here. And as Mayor Protem spoke, I've never, I think of diversity, inclusivity, and ethics, and all of the things that we all talk about. They shouldn't be one place. They need to be in absolutely every unit of everything we do. And so that's how I look at it. So, no, I have never thought or considered having another Ethics Board, or having a board for ethics. But I'm sorry that you took the word nerd badly, because I feel, I know Councillor Nermella well enough to know it was in a kind way. And I'm happy to hear Councillor Emmons didn't take it any other way. And I probably was one that joked and laughed afterwards, because I appreciate when we are able to have some lightheartedness and not take one another so seriously. So if it offended anyone, we apologize. Obviously, none of us up here were, I don't think you were, that we apologize, others were. But, like I said, I think we know you well enough of how it was said, and I'm sorry for what was said tonight. So, Councillor Nermella, we'll let you have the last word.
Well, thank you very much to my colleagues. I really appreciate the support. And I, yeah, for me, I recognize that, and it's clear now, that for some folks, nerd is still a derogatory word. I've grown so far away from that, because I was a nerd when I was younger, and I kind of had to embrace that, or, you know, not like myself. So I teach my daughters that it's good to be a nerd, because you're, you know, and so I only said it with respect and just recognizing that Councillor Emmons had knowledge and experience. And so that was the reason behind that. So, yeah, and regarding the Ethics Board, you know, I agree that we do have a couple of ethics codes, not only within our organization, but outside of it through, I think, SIRSIA, or is it, or the CMO? There are a couple of elements that we try to follow and do follow and that guide us in our decisions and our thinking. And I'm not opposed to an Ethics Board. I just, honestly, I think it's just a matter of priority for the community. And as the mayor mentioned, we do have a lot of other priorities, and I think that's probably why the delay in response. So, again, thank you to my colleagues.
See, nothing else. That brings us to the Consent Agenda, item 8 or 9A. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Kurt Alstett to the Metro Water Recovery Board of Directors with the term of office effective July-
I'm sorry, I think we need to address consent first.
Yeah.
I apologize. It's 8A.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had it circled and everything. I'm sorry. I was thinking 8A was, or 9A was consent. Sorry, 8A.
That's okay. I see. I follow the lead.
I know, I know. I'm sorry.
I move to adopt consent, items 8A.
Councillor Emmons, second. It's moved and seconded to approve Consent Agenda, item 8A. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
Councillor Emmons?
Yes.
Councillor Izadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councillor Nermella?
Yes.
And Councillor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Appointments and Resignations, item 9A.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to appoint Kurt Alstett to the Metro Water Recovery Board of Directors with the term of office effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2024.
Councillor Emmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Kurt Alstett. And I want to say thank you to Kurt for saying yes. He's a lifesaver. So, thanks. Is there any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councillor, or I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Demott?
Yes.
Councillor Emmons?
Yes.
Councillor Izadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Councillor Nermella?
Yes.
Councillor Seymour?
Yes.
And Councillor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
And we're getting into item 10, Public Hearings, Another New Business, and I can't say how excited I am to present to you Resolution Number 19. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 19, Establishing Criteria for City Manager Recruitment Process.
Councillor Emmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 19, Establishing the Criteria for City Manager Recruitment Process. This also takes care of the state of Colorado. Pieces that we have to have checkmarked off. If you haven't gone and looked, they have added the pictures to it, to the brochure. There's going to be miniature version, there'll be the full-size version that people can get to. There will be a link on our own website, as well as throughout the- as well as throughout the country, that our people are going to, our search team is going to put on. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to say thank you to everybody who participated in helping us develop the criteria for the new city manager. This is an exciting moment, I think, for the city. There were people from besides council, businesses, residents, a lot of input that went into this. The other thing I would say is if you didn't take time to read that brochure, read that brochure and think about how blessed you are to be able to live in this city because it's a good reminder of how blessed we truly are here.
And I know Greg Horn, our search person, is online. I just want to say, Greg, you don't have to come online, but thank you for all that you've done this far. And we're now excited to get the ball rolling and can't wait till June 9th, when we might start seeing some names. With that, roll call, please. Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. And again, Mr. Horn, thank you and go to bed. He's two hours later than we are.
Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to council's bill number 20. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill number 20 on first reading, creating Chapter 23 and Title V Westminster Municipal Code relating to entertainment districts and common consumption areas within the city of Westminster, including the creation of the Orchard Entertainment District and the Downtown Westminster Entertainment District.
Counselor Emmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to pass Council's Bill number 20. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a quick question. For the, is there an opportunity? I'm specifically looking at the Orchard Town Center Entertainment District boundary. And I'm wondering if there is an opportunity to either increase or decrease boundaries in the future, once this is set? Because I see in the top northwest quadrant of this boundary, there are some businesses in there. And I'm wondering if maybe they would want to be in that district in the future.
Thank you for the question. Ron Arguello from the City Attorney's Office will help us answer that one.
Sure. Okay. And is there, I just heard there might be an acre limit. Is that correct? Okay. And I'm assuming this isn't at 100 acres? Okay, so there's ability to expand. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Azadi? Oh, or Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Counselor. I just quickly want to say that I'm excited to be getting to vote on this. This first came up on my very first year on council during my first term. And so I have to give a shout out to Adrian Gutierrez, who runs Three Margaritas and the Orchard. This has been something that he's been pushing for, for a really long time. If you frequent there as much as I do, you see the different events that he's been doing and why he thought this was important. He does a lot of traditional Mexican dance type performances that he has and does lots of cool different events through his restaurant. So I know this is going to make that easier and for him to be able to partner with his fellow businesses in Orchard Town Center. And I'm excited about what this brings to the new downtown as well. So very excited to see this on our agenda tonight.
Counselor Azadi?
Yeah, just want to pile on there and say I'm very excited about this. And I did have a question about what was just said up there. If we did want to expand this, does that require a certain amount of the businesses who would be part of the new expansion? Do they need to approve that? Or can we, as, so is there a requirement for the businesses within the boundary to approve it or not?
Thank you for your question, Counselor. There is not a requirement that the businesses have any say in this. This is really for council to decide what the district is going to include, the area, the space it's going to include. It's up to the businesses that are within that district to determine if they are going to create a common consumption area and a promotional association to operate within that. But it is in council's sole discretion. I was, I did confirm with, I did confirm that we are really at capacity, I guess, on the Orchard. It has expanded 99.2 acres. So we can modify. I think one of the first things that was talked about from Veststar and the Orchard was maybe eliminating some businesses that might not be involved, like Target and Macy's that don't have like their licenses or they're not going to authorize those that are not a part of that. And we could do some working around to reorganize, to allow expansion by eliminating those. But we wanted to keep it easy right now. To say it is a block area. It's very rectangular as opposed to a bunch of little cutouts. But we can, we can get creative with that in the future to allow for expansion to those businesses.
Okay, thanks.
So I don't forget, can I put Rich in line? Go ahead, Rich.
Thank you. Comment on this too. I want to thank, I am the liaison to the Special Permits and Licensing Board and the City Attorney's Office on this project, led by Mr. Arguello, has already done the training for Special Permits and Licensing Board. And that is a quasi judicial board. And they are looking forward enthusiastically for these first applications to come in. And they are, they are prepared and ready. So thanks to that board for doing the extra work.
Counselor Nermella?
Yeah, I just want to share my excitement that we are implementing an entertainment district. Started working on it when I was on staff. And this is such a creative opportunity for economic development in the city and hitting two places right now with business owners that are looking forward to utilizing it immediately. It's fantastic. And I look forward to seeing what happens in both areas. Thanks.
And I know when Mayor Protem and I went with the Westminster Chamber on some retention visits, A-Lift, A Loft. A Loft is in that peak of the corner up in the northeast. And they were excited to be included because they're around a lot of the apartment buildings. But they are included. And if anybody hasn't been down there, is it Friday nights that they have their band and everything? They have some great things that I didn't know was going on there. So you might want to stop by for some excitement some Friday night. Seeing nothing else, roll call, please. And bless you, whoever sneezed. Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. That brings us to Council's Bill number 21. Counselor Emmons?
I move to pass Council's Bill number 21, on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary water lease agreement with Aggregate Industries-WCR Incorporated.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Council's Bill number 21. Is there any further questions? Roll call, please. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. That brings us to resolution number 20. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 20, authorizing interim city manager to execute a quick claim deed, transferring a parcel of land located in the south half of Section 24 Township 2, south range 69 west of the Sixth Principal Median, city of Westminster, county of Jefferson, state of Colorado, hereafter referred to as Portion Track E in downtown Westminster, from the city of Westminster to the Westminster Economic Development Authority for future development of Marsac Fine Foods Grocery Store.
Counselor Emmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution 20. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. That brings us to Council, or to item 10E. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Engler Callaway Basin and, I don't know how to say that, Tragra LLC for work related to labor law matters in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10E. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven zero vote. That brings us to item 10F. Counselor Emmons?
I move to authorize the city manager to increase the authorized expenditure level from $2,657,574 to $3,8,530 with L.L. Johnson Distributing Company for the purchase of irrigation commodities and pipe in the amount of $3,8,530 plus a contingency in the amount of $300,853, increasing the authorized expenditure amount with this contractor from the original contract in contingency amount of $2,657,574 to $3,309,383, or excuse me,
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Council's, and F. City Manager Andrews, I'm sure this is because of inflation. He's shaking his head yes, for those that can't see him. Seeing no comments, roll call, please. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry about my voice, but I'm, I have a few questions on the value of this project overall. So I think we've been talking through budgeting and finding money. I would like to know how valuable this is in terms of our priorities to do now versus other projects. And one of the questions I had was related to the improvement on hole five. I think it was, I can't find that in here. But, oh, state of the art rain guarding for hole number five as part of this project. I'm just curious, this whole, you know, it's a few million dollars. And I think we need to be a little more prudent on what we spend and when and how and why, particularly since we know we have other things to spend to pay for in this moment that we're in. So I'm just curious if anyone from the city can actually walk me through the value of this and why it needs to be done now versus a million other projects that we could be prioritizing.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Lance Johnson from our Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department is going to come up and walk through some of the rationale behind this contract. It is a contract that's been quite some time in the works and does suffer from the cost escalations related to materials and labor. And Mr. Johnson will walk through that for us. One of the other comments in terms of the overarching priorities is one of the things that we observed during COVID was a very large increase in our community enjoying our parks, open spaces and golf amenities. And this has driven a lot of people to outdoor activities, particularly at these two courses that would benefit from this upgrade. So with that introduction, Mr. Johnson, if you could take it from there?
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Counselors Lance Johnson, Parks Recreation, Parks Golf and Open Space Manager. Counselor Azadi, thank you for the question. So number one, this project was originally approved. The entire financing for this project was approved back in April of 2021. So in this request we're doing just to have this expenditure increase. We've already have all the financing in place. There was no excess cost to the project itself. So that's, I guess, maybe to answer the first part of your question. The rain garden itself, we had an area that runs along Federal between the Farmers Highlight Canal and going south to Brichet Parkway. That was an old riprap channel that did nothing but collect trash for the last 25 years. So with this project, what we've done is reroute that stormwater runoff. And Community Development was nice enough to partner with us. They wanted to do a rain garden someplace in the city. And this seemed like the perfect location to do that. So they've picked up the cost of that rain garden within the golf course project. So they've partnered with us, just like Public Works and Utilities partnered with us, put the new reclaimed pond in on hole number four.
So one of the questions I remember seeing, I think it was from Counselor Nermella, was the, can you walk me through the revenue? So pre-pandemic to now, how much money are we getting from these golf courses? And are people actually attending? Is attendance up? And would this rain garden and other improvements increase revenue? Or what's the economic value here?
So just to go to the rounds and revenue question. So I did include the last 10 years of rounds and revenues for both golf courses combined. You'll see that our revenues are up 34% since 2012. And our rounds are up 18%. I'm assuming this all went to council, the response we gave. So I think everybody got that information. So the rain garden, no, the rain garden does not, will not increase our revenues at all. But we did have a stormwater issue. We had to do something with that stormwater. A rain garden is a much more ecological way to do that. We'll be able to showcase some of the great plant material. Our greenhouse can grow and put in that area. It'll be much better for, I guess, in a wildlife component. It will help filter and drain that stormwater that runs off as it will go into another holding pond in the golf course and then eventually exit out the golf course into the actual stormwater system. So it actually helps clean the water. So a water quality issue, it actually is better for us in the long run. But no, it does not, does not increase our revenues in any way, shape or form as far as the golf course.
And the question on timing, if we don't do this now, what will happen?
We are already doing it.
Yeah.
The project's already in, right?
Oh, it's 90% done?
Yeah, we started, we started the irrigation portion of the project at Legacy Ridge back in August of 2021. We're all, the contractors about six to eight weeks away from finishing the project at Legacy Ridge and then we'll move over to Walnut Creek, starting in June, July, the summer.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nermella?
Yeah, so as Counselor Azadi expressed, I was also just wondering about the frequency of visitors at the golf courses and whether it was, you know, still worth putting this continued investment in for the community or if those spaces were ever going to be re-envisioned as open space, opportunities for the entire community. It's just, not to say that this project itself is something to hinge that thought on. It just sparked that, that thinking in me and trying to understand, are folks golfing right now? Is there a better use for this land? Could it be more accessible to the rest of our community? And I don't know, you know, so I would just plant that seed. Super bad pun there. But I just, you know, if, the other piece of this is also, do we track whether, you know, our residents are using these golf courses or the demographics of who's using these?
So we traditionally, up until four years ago, we had both resident and non-resident rates. So we were able to use that formula to be able to track resident, non-resident use much easier. Four years ago, we went to a one rate fee. So it's a little more difficult to track. We do have a very large database of emails. And we do have certain categories that we can, but we don't really have the means that we ask every person that we ask every person that comes in the golf shop where, you know, if they're a resident or non-resident. So we don't have that ability really to track that anymore. As you can see, our rounds have increased greatly over the last year. The pandemic was actually, except for 2020, we were closed for nine weeks. Even with that year, we had a fairly good year compared to speaking of the other 10 years. Golf has been booming since the pandemic started, uh, to be honest. The golf courses themselves, I feel, um, are fairly well embedded in the community. We have, uh, we just finished two weeks ago, we had a free resident day. This is the sixth or seventh year we've done that. I dare you to go to any other golf course in the state of Colorado, or maybe even the country that offers a day of free play to residents. I think we want to give back to the community as much as we want the community to come and play our golf courses. Our player development programs are overflowing with juniors and adults who want to learn the game of golf. We host movies in the park. We have nature walks. We have Farmers Highlight Canal runs through Legacy Ridge. We have Walnut Creek Trail runs through Walnut Creek. We are very well embedded in the community, I think, and I believe that the use of golf courses that also combine half of its turf, half of them are native areas or open space, some of the actual 3700 acres of open space is actually considered open space in our open space portfolio. You take the combination of golf and turf, you take the combination of native, the revenues we produce, um, view corridors that we, um, protect, the water quality that we do with the golf courses, uh, the wildlife habitat that we have, uh, the wildlife corridors that we have. I think the golf courses are extremely beneficial to a city of Westminster. I think we have a little less than $1 billion of assessed value that, uh, houses the round Legacy Ridge golf course. We have 3,000 people that work in, in the Westmore Business Park. I think they're very good economic drivers along with also being very well received by the community.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, you have made your argument and convinced me. Just one last question. The, uh, the contingency amount, how much do we think that it would be used or?
I would like to say we wouldn't use any of the 10% contingency, but I, the way things are going, I can't, I'm not even going to make that prediction. I, I'm very confident that we're, this number, we can't go any higher than this number as it is. We will have to either cut something out to be able to make up that number. So we will not be back here to ask for any more money.
Okay.
I shouldn't probably say that, but I'm going to.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Counselor Emmons?
Thank you, uh, and thank you for thoughtful insights on this. I will say firsthand, my husband takes advantage of all of our courses and they are always busy. It's very hard for him to ever get a tee time. So, um, but one of my points that I wrote down before you even said it was that, uh, our golf courses during COVID were one of the two highest revenue sources for the city during COVID. It's one of the things that didn't even take a dip, uh, really. And now I believe that we're back to full capacity because there was timing as far as tee times on spacing out folks, um, but I believe that we're back to full capacity on, on that. But, um, so the, the reason I am going to continue to approve this is that, um, it kind of goes back to our core value as a city and as a council, as a body, where we have said that the city should go first in, uh, making sure that we're saving water. And this is a prime example as far as the city, uh, doing its best to, uh, conserve on water and make sure that we're using, um, not potable water to water our, uh, golf courses that we're using. And if you haven't had an opportunity to go by, um, I was on the open space trail just mentioned on, is it Hole 5?
Hole 7.
7, yes. You can't see it from Federal because there's a big berm, um, when you're driving by, but if you, there is a open space, uh, trail that parallels to the course and it really kind of beautifies the area. I think when, when I walked by it, um, there was hundreds of geese and just wildlife in that area that I don't think really was there before. And so, uh, it's, I just think it's an overall benefit not only to the residents that live there, but to, uh, people that are visiting the city, using our course, and, um, to our residents that are using the course as well. Um, and to the fact that, uh, it, it's essentially open space as it is. I know it's revenue making, but, um, people have an opportunity, uh, especially at dusk to, to walk those trails, um, to walk the golf course, really. So it's not necessarily like for certain, it, I mean, it is for certain times where whoever would like to use it, but, um, it, it could be seen as an open space in the morning or maybe even the evening. So, uh, and then also to the point that, uh, it does employ a lot of youth. And so that's also another, uh, opportunity for us as a community to make sure that we're having those opportunities available, that they're able to then, um, take full advantage of, uh, of what we have to offer in our city. So that's why I'm going to approve it tonight.
Mayor Protem?
Mr. Johnson, maybe in Counselor Emmons hit some of this, but if I recall correctly, we kind of had the same, a lot of the same discussion with different faces up here when we first approved this. But I seem to recall a big emphasis around, um, the former system not really being able to be maintained any longer or being very costly to maintain. I can't remember exact details, but also that there was water savings just in the new, new, uh, technology. I seem to remember that being a really key point. Is that, am I right in remembering that?
Yes, so the useful life of the, of the system at Legacy Ridge, um, is now this system will be 29 years old this summer. So the useful life of a PVC system in general, 20 to 25 years, if you have a staff that's taking very good care of the system, we've done a great job of that. Yes, it does get more costly each year to maintain it in its certain state. With what we're putting into the ground now, we should, we're hoping to see anywhere from eight to 12 to 15% water efficiency with the new, with the newer technology as far as heads and whatnot. And the pipe we're putting in the ground, HDP will last, none of us will be here when that pipe has to replace with 50 to 75 years. So it, it's, it's a big, a big cost, and it's sustainable, what we're doing with the new system we're putting in the ground.
Well, I certainly appreciate it, and I think that there's a good point, um, being made that really anybody could go golf there, so they, so choose. If you want some good entertainment, follow me when I happen to stumble there because it's not pretty. But you also didn't mention during COVID that you did some theater on specifically Legacy Ridge, so.
There's, there's a lot of things that we do at the golf courses that, as a matter of fact, the email I sent about answering your question, Counselor Normella, um, I included our golf operational plan and kind of a summary of it. I would urge you to read that just to give you a very good idea. The only thing we haven't done is update with the new strategic plan that you brought forward. We'll do that here very soon. We've been a little short-staffed, we've lost some staff at the golf courses. So once we get fully staffed again, we'll get the operational plan done for this year. It will reflect a new strategic plan, but there's a lot of great information there. The golf courses contribute heavily to the city in many, many different areas, uh, that a lot of people just don't know about. And we probably do, but need to do a better job of promoting ourselves in that respect.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes, thank you, and, um, thank you for your answers, and thank you, Counselor Emmons, for convincing, for very convincing argument. I, my heart has changed. So water conservation, youth employment, it's highly utilized, it's almost done, it's just 10% done or so, and recreational activities. So, so I think that that's, um, that's valuable. And the point of why I wanted to challenge this a little bit was because I think going forward, we need to start challenging the stuff that we pay for and that we approve. So this was a great example. This is obviously valuable and the arguments made, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for being with us and answering questions. You were so passionate. You almost convinced me that I could put a battery-powered sewing machine on the back of a golf cart and get some sewing done while trying to golf, but I decided, I still will support you, but I'll be at home sewing. So, thank you. Thank you for your passion.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Normella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Item 10G. Counselor Emmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the interim City Manager to, excuse me, to determine that the public interest would be best served by authorizing the interim City Manager to waive the city's bidding requirements and continue with the sole source software maintenance and support agreement with Advanced Utility Systems Corporation for an additional five years not to exceed $90,585 in 2023, with future annual increases not to exceed 5% per year based on the existing contract.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, um, Item 10G1. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker? The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Item 10G2. Counselor Emmons?
I move based on the recommendation of the interim City Manager to determine that the public interest would be best served by authorizing the interim City Manager to waive the city's bidding requirements and execute a sole source purchase of software licenses from Advanced Utility Systems Corporation in amount not to exceed $60,000 with a prorated support and annual maintenance fee in the amount not to exceed $15,000 in 2022.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass, uh, item number 10G2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Normella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker? And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That is it for this meeting, um, at 8:48. But that brings us to the WEDA agenda. At 8:48, we will incorporate the roll call from our previous meeting. And do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March 28th, 2022? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the March 28th, 2022 meeting as presented.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Item 3A, Resolution 219. Mayor Protem?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 219, authorizing interim executive director to execute a quitclaim deed transferring a parcel of land located in the southwest quarter of Section 24 Township to South Range 69 West and Sixth Principal Median City of Westminster, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado here and after referred to as portion of Block 2, Block A1 in downtown Westminster from the Westminster Economic Development Authority to the City of Westminster to be included in tract E of downtown Westminster.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 219. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Board Member Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Demat?
Yes.
Board Member Emmons?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Board Member Normella?
Yes.
And Board Member Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
And I forgot we were in WEDA, sorry about that. That is 8:50. We close the WEDA meeting and we will go into, um, post-meeting. Anybody's welcome to go in there, or if it's crowded, you can, and they, they can see it out here, yeah. But anyway, we will go into the other room for that. And if we don't see you in there, have a great week and don't forget to join us for, Police Week, and have a great one. And have a great one.
Yeah, just push your button, it'll turn green.
It's, we're ready now, Mayor. Okay. First up is presentation of faith-based homeless sheltering and land use process.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Downing is on the floor of this RV Odyssey across southeast part of the United States. And I received a picture the other day in front of a Piggly Wiggly, which is a grocery chain, if you're not familiar with it. I informed him he should try to attract them to either 72nd Sheridan or 72nd Federal, and he would be a hero. So, you know, while he's on vacation, he's trying to do some recruitment. Unfortunately, I don't think Piggly Wiggly's distribution is as far west. But, you know, Dave Downing is a man of many talents, so we'll listen. So we're here this evening based on interest in what it would take if city council desired to provide a legal path for temporary sheltering in the City of Westminster. Next slide. So that really is the key policy question here this evening. And I'll give you a brief high-level summary and some work that was done a couple of years ago to look at what would the appropriate mechanism be. And really, we're talking about two things here. Faith-based sheltering in religious institutions. And this Safe Parking Program, which is a program in the Denver metro area. Next slide, please. So this item really is supporting city council's strategic plan goal of proactive public safety, partnering with agencies that provide access to shelter to people experiencing homelessness as they transition out of homelessness. And so really, of course, when, you know, we're in the spectrum of land use, we're talking two specific uses here. And this is use we see many of our neighbors have with rotational temporary housing. You know, and it's, these are partnerships between faith-based organizations that are technically the property owners, providing the building, perhaps providing some volunteers. And then nonprofit agencies, whether in Adams County, there's Cold Weather Care. You know, they're operating with four churches in Thornton and North Glen right now. Family Promise of Greater Denver. The Severe Weather Network is another one of these nonprofits. But basically, the actual operations of these temporary shelters are partnerships between the nonprofits and the churches. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Mayor.
Has Growing Home ever thought of putting back what they had? Their program worked so well.
Good question.
And it's because of codes that they...
So Kate Scarborough unfortunately was feeling a little bit under the weather. She is watching here and is ready via text. So, you know, she is our expert when it comes to more of the ins and outs with that backstory and understanding the program that Growing Home was operating, and that program has ceased. I don't know for sure if, and Kate is there. You know, I don't know if she's able to interject.
Yes. Growing Home is not considering doing so because they found tremendous success with their new Housing Stability Program, which is based on homeless prevention. They've been able to help more than 10 times the families that they were able to assist with the sheltering program with a lot less staff dedication to it and a lot less reliance on partner agencies and volunteers. So they're doing 10 times the work within-house.
Perfect, thank you. I didn't know that, so that's helpful. I just, I knew they had a great program with what they did, so I just wondered.
They, they did, and they were reluctant to see it transition away, but they have found tremendous success with more than 170 families assisted last year for homeless prevention.
And feel better. Sorry you have to be here tonight, but thank you.
No, thank you.
All right. And then the second use is what's called the Colorado Safe Parking Initiative. And you may or may not be familiar with that. There's a non, it's a nonprofit operation in partnership with the DU Sturm College of Law, basically working with churches to provide safe, legal parking in their lots. You see some just basic parameters around their program. They are operating in many of our neighboring communities. Not a tremendous presence, but they're out there with several of our neighboring communities and other lots. Counselor Azadi?
Two questions. One, why acts of sin?
I, I do not know. Kate did facilitate a meeting with Linda Behringer, who's the executive director of the program. This was back in 2021. And so she educated us on some of their specifics. I think from a, from a safety and from a neighborhood impact standpoint, when you look at, and hygiene, I don't want to speak for the program themselves, but I think they made that decision. That's, that's not a code decision or a land use, you know, regulation reality in any of the neighboring communities as a nonprofit. Those are just the parameters. My understanding is those are the parameters that they've drawn.
And the background checks, do you know why? So are we saying that if you have a criminal background, you're not allowed? Is that what that's for? Or what are they checking for?
You know, and I'll defer to Kate. She may know a little more. I believe that they are looking at a criminal background. And I know with many shelters, you know, whether it's brick and mortar structure or the safe parking, oftentimes depending, because once again, these are nonprofit programs that can set parameters based as they see fit. They'll make certain rules, and that's where, like with a lot of the brick and mortar, if you have a certain criminal history in lieu of having a shelter bed, you may be given a voucher for a hotel or motel. I'll defer to Kate if there's more to that. But once again, I mean, these are nonprofits setting the rules for their programs.
Yes, Eric, that's exactly right. And to the criminal background checkpoint, it's largely, they're looking for violent criminal history that has negatively led to a victim-led crime, a personal victim, not a property crime. So it's, it would be acts of violence that they would prohibit, not trespass. The same is true for most of the faith-based sheltering programs because otherwise, most people experiencing homelessness would be limited from entering any faith-based shelter program if they were to do that type of strict, strict background check. And then to Eric's point, yes, that's something. The seven parking space limit is because that is what the initiative, the nonprofit agency itself, has said is their comfort level with it. And, and they're finding success with that model. And they're able to provide supports for up to seven vehicles because remember, that can be up to 28 people in some instances. So they're, they're, they're finding that that's their sweet spot, and that's how they're having a positive effect. They are getting people housed who are staying in their vehicles. They largely all work during the day. So that is, that's the main reason that they're focusing on that type of limit. And it's also easier for the faith-based organizations that are hosting them to be able to provide food and provide other supports, including but not limited to trash removal and, and some level of porta-potties or access to the building for restrooms.
So Kate, I'm sorry, just to follow up there. Mine is standing. Many unhoused individuals who choose to opt out of sheltering or going into a shelter, their reasoning is because they don't feel safe in it. I'm assuming this faith-based approach with the background checks can help to mitigate against that, right? So that they wouldn't have this fear. There's a real fear from the homeless going into shelters because they feel, because there's always situations that occur in these shelters that they don't want to be involved with from a violent standpoint. If this is the case where we are prohibiting basically the bad actors, right? Would there be, would this be an opportunity to communicate, to have a communication as we roll this out, if we roll this out, to young house, to tell them it's safe, there's background checks, et cetera, just so it can help motivate them to actually opt in to it?
Absolutely. And that's something that the Colorado Safe Parking Initiative does highlight, that they, they help provide that messaging because it's their program. But our navigator would be helping promote that among the people who are staying outdoors in Westminster, and especially those living in vehicles, of course. And it also makes it easier to recruit volunteers from the faith-based community as well. It just eases the comfort level on the part of volunteers who do not necessarily have interactions with people experiencing homelessness on a day-in, day-out basis.
I have a question. For the parking, do they have to move their vehicles during the day? Or can those vehicles stay on that lot during the day?
The Colorado Safe Parking Initiative requires that the vehicles be moved during the day. And I believe there's also land use concerns around that. And it often, it often eases the minds of the decision-makers in the faith-based community too, to know that they wouldn't have seven cars in their lot 24/7, that this would be something that they would see come and go. And, and there'd be certain hours of operation instead of 24/7 operations.
Okay, next slide. Right now, as Westminster Municipal Code stands, these are the only three legal sheltering options in the city right now. The first being emergency sheltering for natural disasters. It actually requires a declaration of emergency, something that the city has been doing for quite some time in partnership with our, our regional and nonprofit partners, hotel motel stays on cold weather nights and other, under limited sets of other circumstances. And then there are two units in the city operated by a nonprofit that is transitional housing. But, but those, those are the only existing legal sheltering options in the city as it stands today. Next slide.
Just out of curiosity, how are the, how are the, of the transitional housing units operated? Are they licensed as motels or?
No, Counselor Baker, they're, they're actual apartments. So they're, they're two, and Kate may have some stats on the families with that. But they're, but they're actual apartments that are leased, and the nonprofit is the, you know, pays the lease on those. So this is incredibly small. So I went old school and just, because it's, it's a little interesting. These are, send those down. This is a list of the 43 religious facilities within the city and their locations. And there's a little table there and compliments of our NODGIS team. So when we talk about these two uses, as you're all aware, the city's largely a PUD system plan unit development with very specific PDPs and ODPs for a lot of the development. As we get into the next slide here and talk about the conditional use permit process, there is no legal process today that would allow for these two types of uses, the safe parking or the temporary shelter. As we consider the conditional use permit process, technically, that could apply to any of these 43 institutions. So as you contemplate this and consider policy, of course, as with any land use, a neighborhood and surrounding property context is an important consideration. Back in 2019, an interdepartmental staff team took a look at this issue and made the collective recommendation that the city's conditional use permit process would be the most appropriate legal avenue for considering this type of use should the city receive formal interest from nonprofits and/or, you know, their faith-based partners. Next slide. So the, the existing conditional use code section right now only applies, well, it applies to several things. Group homes for persons with intellectual or development disabilities. Groups, group homes for folks with behavioral or mental health disorders. Group home for the aged, that's the actual code language. Domestic violence shelter homes, things like that. So as we, I think as the staff team considered, okay, where, where does this fit? You know, as far as use, it kind of folded into, into that sort of use there. In the agenda memo, there was, or staff report, there was some, a list of criteria that staff would recommend would be considered for these applications. At a real high level, I think as we've learned from our neighbors, management by a nonprofit is sort of key to success. You know, of course, there are often volunteers from the actual churches themselves. However, having that umbrella to manage and kind of administer, because there is a fair amount of work involved, is an important thing. A management plan, and that's where in the staff report, there was a list, you know, basic things, you know, hours of operation, limits on, or, or, you know, how many beds, you know, if it's indoors, how many cars you heard the max of the seven for the safe parking. You know, some, some basic considerations with that. And then while we're not looking for absolute compliance with International Building Code or International Fire Code, we would highly recommend life safety approvals by the fire marshal and chief building official. marshal and chief building official. We're really looking at intent of code, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, you know, emergency exit path. You know, some of our neighbors, for instance, the city and county of Broomfield, limits the square footage of floor area that can be used for temporary overnight sheltering, some common sense life safety items. I think, you know, there have been a lot of discussions around, well, will a church have to retrofit sprinklers for a whole building to make this happen? And I don't want to speak for the fire department. I don't think that's staff's intent. Staff's intent, you know, is to support whatever city council's policy direction is and try to find a way to promote life safety. Once again, getting at the intent of code, understanding that assembly use is a very different thing than residential use. And, you know, there are some life safety items that have to be there that I think some of our neighbors have figured out ways to do that. But it's, yeah, there are legit life safety items. And then, of course, adequate insurance coverage should something bad happen. Councilor Nermel.
Yeah. So have we had our fire and building take a look at this? Or would we, as we are fleshing this out a little bit more, so that they can look at a lot of the conditions that they're going to run up against and just see if this is something that they could find a way to make happen?
Yeah. Well, so I think in talking with our chief building official, our fire chief, fire marshal, each building is unique. I mean, every build is unique. So hence, where I think the collective staff recommendation through the conditional use permit was to look at conditions with each building. And like some of those, you know, must-have life safety items. And, you know, temporary use is kind of a key thing versus permanent use. And, you know, they're, I mean, the IRC, the International Residential Code, I mean, it's very specific on residential uses. It's, just speaking frankly, I'm not sure that any of our churches could meet the letter of the international code either for the IRC or the IFC. But once again, I think our folks are looking at intent and how can sort of, there would be risks with this. And I guess it's sort of what are those acceptable risks? You know, once again, getting at the intent of the code versus the strict letter of the codes.
Do, in having a nonprofit, you know, like you talked about Weather Care in Adams County, is an umbrella of a nonprofit any more helpful with respect to insurance or liability to sort of help facilitate this in certain locations?
So, and I don't know if Kate's familiar with insurance structure. I'm not clear as far as who carries what, like with the severe weather network or the cold weather network in Adco, who, you know, I mean, of course, the churches have insurance for their properties. However, you know, typically, policies are predicated on what the use actually is. I'll defer to Kate if she's had any individual conversations. However, I know, you know, if you're looking to expand your use beyond what your policy covers, that may or may not be an issue for each insurance provider. So that may be where the nonprofit comes in. Kate, if you're there, I mean, do you know any background on the insurance coverage?
Yes. Generally speaking, the nonprofits are able to bear some of the burden of the increased liability because they're training the volunteers. So they're taking on that employment, the employer role of that, whereas the church continues to need the physical property liability insurance. And the behavioral issues that can lead to risks that might be life safety issues are often mitigated by the training and the onsite staff oversight of the nonprofit.
Councilor Zabey?
Just for clarification, this, going after the intent, that's standard, all right? For most temporary sheltering in different municipalities, this would not be a unique situation, the standard thing?
Well, so looking at some of our neighbors, it varies. I mean, I think as, of course, the whole region has been challenged with, you know, trying to assist individuals facing homelessness, you know, there has been that intent. Some, so the city of Thornton, if the occupants are below eight, they will consider this temporary sheltering as an accessory use. However, if they're serving more than eight clients, then it kicks into something very similar to what we're talking about here. The city of Fort Collins, it's just seasonal and they limit it to no more than three churches. So they place a cap on the number of shelters that there can be. And Kate knows a lot more than I do, but with some of the existing, you know, the cold weather network or severe weather network, you know, their model has typically been to work with three or four churches and oftentimes rotating churches every 30 days or so, which is, I guess, a positive thing as far as rotating it around. However, when you're starting to get into the uniqueness of each structure and let's say the nonprofit is applying for the conditional use permit, but using this structure here versus this structure here, you know, there are going to be differences in those structures. You know, every fire marshal, every chief building official is different in what they are or are not willing to accept in their interpretations. But it is important to note that back in 2019, when the interdepartmental team was looking at this, both the city's chief building official and fire marshal were part of this group and are part of the recommendation that's before you today that I'm carrying forward.
How does Arvada work theirs? I think it's for cold weather, but they bring them to one place. And I don't know how they pick people up or any of that, but I've just talked to one person that's been involved with it and haven't had a chance to ask how it's all put together. But they bring them to one place, hot chocolate and stuff, and then take them out to wherever they're staying.
Okay. So Arvada, and from what I understand, they, their approach has been a week at a time in different locations? And I'll defer to Kate if things have changed. But they've taken the interpretation that this temporary sheltering is an accessory use. And, but they, you know, with, well, the former Growing Home Program and the Severe Weather Network, they took on kind of a northern branch, if you will, of the severe weather network, because I believe they were primarily operating out of Englewood, Littleton, and maybe Lakewood. And I think with that nonprofit and Arvada's partnership, that was sort of an expansion to the north?
I just know their Police Citizens Academy took a huge role in all of it.
Okay. They certainly, you know, and I'll defer to Kate on some specifics, but they seem to be very proactive there.
Yes. So I think there's two different components to the question you're asking there. First, Eric's 100% right. Arvada does take an accessory use approach to faith-based sheltering where the city of Arvada has said temporary sheltering is part of the mission of religious institutions. And so consequently, it's their spy right. So they can simply do it without building inspections, without fire inspections, without a permitting process. But that's Arvada. Other cities take the varying approaches that Eric mentioned and where they've got more involvement with inspecting sites. And that said, then there's also the component of your question around the different models of faith-based nonprofit sheltering. And there's two different major types of models. The first is the emergency weather shelter, which generally in this area operates October through April. And those organizations, which includes Severe Weather Shelter Network out of Jefferson County and Arapahoe County, as well as Cold Weather Care that used to operate out of North Glen and Thornton and has since ceased functioning, but I'm hearing that they might be starting up again, so fingers crossed on that. But they operate for those seven months of the year by sending people to, and I'm going to backtrack on my wording there. They have people go to a warming site, which is what you're referring to, where they get cocoa and coffee and have a chance to get in and out of the weather if it's, if they're not able to get over to the, if the church's doors don't open until several hours after the intake occurs, which is normally the case. So they'll be transported by bus or van to the intake site so that there's very limited vehicular traffic going to the church during normal off-hours. So that mitigates the concerns of the surrounding neighborhood. But those, that model of emergency sheltering uses the same four churches that rotate on a four-week basis, a week at a time. And then there is the other model, which is the Family Promise of Greater Denver model, which is also the same network that Growing Home was affiliated with, where they try to sign up up to 26 churches in the course of a year, and each church hosts for two weeks out of the year, but non-consecutive weeks. So the families enrolled in that program, if they would be enrolled in the program for a full year, which is very rare, it's usually more of a 90 to 180-day program, they would rotate over the course of a year to 26 churches, but moving every week. And so both models operate similarly in that you move on a weekly basis. The question is how many faith-based organizations are actually hosting in each model? Does that help?
Yes.
Quick question. Does the dispersment of the, so does geographic location, the distribution of churches matter in terms of sending someone who's unhoused to a facility? So if we had them in one area of the city, is that a negative versus having one or two all over the city in different geographical areas?
Well, I think there's two components to that one as well. There'd be the land use issue of impact on surrounding neighborhood. If you have two churches that are right next door to one another, I think there would be an increased impact on the area. And at the same time, these programs generally, they're not operating out of only one city. They're operating out of multiple cities and rotating. In the Severe Weather Shelter Network case, it's true, the northern rotation is only in Arvada, and they have not expressed an interest in going north of Arvada. However, those sites do take people in from Westminster and unincorporated Jeffco and Wheat Ridge. And then the model that Growing Home operated, as well as the model that Family Promise of Greater Denver operates, it's limited to very few families. And they try to keep the families in the same general vicinity to where the children go to school because that's easier on the family unit itself in trying to figure out routes to school on a weekly basis, if you can imagine that challenge.
Councilor Baker? Yeah. Who are we trying to serve here? To me, these are, these are very different communities. If you have the safe parking, that's a whole different demographic than are the people camping in our open spaces. So who are we trying to address?
Just a question. Is, I thought, I mean, because there's two separate programs. So I feel like if I understand right, or at least what I was hoping we would get, is that if a faith-based organization wanted to open their doors during severe weather events, that they would be able to house people overnight inside their facility. So that would be speaking to people that potentially could be camping in our open space. The second, to your point, would be people who have cars that are living out of their cars that have a safe place to park at night so that they can sleep in their car and not be hassled. Am I correct in that?
Correct. Yeah. And I think just coming from the land use stand with the team looking at this, you know, there, of course, applications would be looked at a little differently, you know, with the components of a brick and mortar versus the parking structure. But that avenue of the conditional use process would be the same overarching process for both uses. But Mayor Protem's correct as far as, I mean, just the other day, you know, I had some folks that were in an RV and, you know, looking for a spot in one of the safe parking programs. And they were waiting for a spot to open up, you know, they, because they had the RV, they weren't going to stay in the shelter. So that's, yeah, and then you have the individuals living in vehicles.
But is there a problem in Westminster with people living in vehicles?
I guess what do you mean by?
I'm not aware of a problem in Westminster with people living in.
There are people living in vehicles.
Quite a few.
And are they making a problem?
Well, they're not making a problem, but the problem is for them is to say, as example, is you have your vehicle and you're going and you park in Walmart and sleep, Walmart decides they don't want you sleeping there. That's potentially you deciding or choosing a place that you feel like you're not going to get hassled to park your car and sleep overnight versus us saying that this specific spot, this nonprofit has sanctioned you to say, you can come use our property and sleep there overnight. So.
And do they have really time limits? Like you can't show up before 7:00 o'clock and you have to be out by 7:00?
Well, right now, we don't allow, but I would assume that would be up to the nonprofit in what I'm reading, which gets into some of my questions, is I would want there to be some sort of limit. I would want there to be some sort of code enforcement to make sure that they aren't turning into nuisance parking lots, you know, so that, yeah, they could do it, but that we're doing it in a way that protects the health and safety of the community. And I would imagine.
One of our churches is under the Colorado Act and they have, I forget what they have right currently, but they have at least one, if not more. And they're a congregation that has a gym and showers and all that. So they offer that to whoever's there. They offer them restrooms and they do have a porta potty outside. But they show them where the area is to park. And I know that there's hours there, they're to be out by a certain hour in the morning and they can come in and park at night. And they've made it so there's good lighting and stuff so that they're safe. But as long as people in the church are there, when they come and whatnot, they offer, like I said, showers and stuff to them.
Well, and I mean, for that, that's intent of, what I would like to see is a stopgap, helping people get back on their feet. I mean, you could see the cycle that can degrade if you're not housed, then you can't shower, and then you lose work or can't get work. Like these kind of programs, I think, are important to keep people out of the cycle that are wanting to better themselves.
And is this going on right now, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And is this in violation of our land use code?
Well, zoning is permissive by its nature. And so if.
So we haven't outlawed it specifically?
No, no. The code is silent. So it's, the use isn't authorized, it's not considered an accessory use per the city's zoning tables. But how, and also there isn't a specific prohibition literally in Westminster Municipal Code.
So it's a gray area?
Well, seeing zoning as permissive by.
It's like all the Airbnb.
Correct. It falls, it falls in that same sort of category.
I've been at City Park and seen three cars. I've been behind the PetSmart at Walnut Creek and you have, I think that's where we have a broken-down RV right currently. And we have other vehicles that are parked where the park and ride originally was to be for the train station. the park and ride originally was to be for the train station, and they're out of everybody's way, so probably only the people like me that don't want the speed bumps going into Walnut Creek, you go the back way to get to Target, so you don't have to keep boom, 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 boom. And that's how I see them. But, and then the Walmarts and other parking lots where they just try to exist.
So, I mean, have we gotten complaints on these parkers? I mean, obviously, they exist. Obviously, there are some people making it a nicer situation if they allow them to use an indoor bathroom and a shower. Okay, but, I mean, to me, that's not where we're getting the complaints.
And we've had two on my street along Eaton, but there's been people helping them out because it was a woman and some children, single mom, so.
So we haven't got any complaints that anyone knows about parkers?
Counselor Baker, we, we, I would say on an annual basis with, with parkers, RV, I mean, we, we probably get anywhere between 75 to 100 complaints. Sometimes it's, it's private property, other times it's public property. Just, just last week, my, uh, my new friends, Don and, and Tanya, who were parked on Lowell in the city-owned parking lot adjacent to Electric City, and, you know, they, they were, were looking for a safe parking place, didn't have it, had carbureator problems, broke down, I'm trying, personally helping them out with their carbureator. But we get complaints, we, from residents, from businesses.
And really, what do we do when we get a complaint?
If it's on private property, code enforcement engages. We, we engage, oftentimes, folks are there without the permission of the property owner. So if the property owner does not want them there, we kindly try to facilitate them moving along, which most of the time that, that happens. On rare occasions, sometimes the property owner doesn't have an issue with that, and as long as they're legally licensed, registered, and roadworthy, they're there. If, if they're on-street, then that becomes a police enforcement issue. But, yeah, so they're, they're, you know, we, we, we work to, to move them along.
Okay, and is that a problem?
Um, from our reporting parties, sometimes we, we don't move quick enough, but, but-
How long does it take?
It varies. It, it can be, it can be that day, or in the case of the, the folks that were on Lowell, and they, they, they moved, they're still in the city because we can't get the repair done till, till next week. But it, it, it varies. And, and, and some, yeah, I, I have a staff member that lives in historic Westminster. There, there's an RV on-street right now outside her house, and kind of like the mayor said, the neighborhood's trying to help that, them out. But it's, it's, I, I don't want to say pervasive, but yeah, once again, and this is, I, I could pull actual numbers from our system, but my rough order of magnitude would say, you know, we get between 75 and 100 actual complaints per year.
And how many parkers do you think we have?
No idea.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get what you're getting at, because I mean, to, to me, this is, we're not forcing anybody to do anything. We're saying, if you're a nonprofit and you want to allow a space within these hours to be able to do what people are doing now and not be hassled, not have to get complaints, I mean, why would we not want to allow that if it's somebody's choice? We're not forcing anybody, we're-
Would we become a magnet if we made it legal? If we leave it in this gray area now, it's sort of a self-balancing mechanism. If we make this a permissible use, or whatever you want to call it, would we then become a magnet and have even more people?
What if they're in sanctioned areas? Is that a bad thing?
Uh, well, you know, not all the neighbors help. It's occasionally some complain, and it depends on how, you know, it depends on how long they're there and stuff like that. And one time, I thought Walmart let people park, overnight park in their parking lot. I see your point. It was like a national point, like Sam Club.
I see your point, but I, I don't, I don't think you would, and I'll tell you my reasons why. These are nonprofits who have specific rules and guidelines. So this is a lot of times where you see a lot of the problem in like shelter resistance and stuff is because people don't want to go participate in these programs.
Right, because they don't like following rules. And all the nonprofits have rules.
Because they don't fit criteria, however you want to look at it. But however, there are people who are just in a hard spot that want to move on and, and better themselves. And another one I'll, that I'm more interested in than the, uh, parkers, is how this might equate to things like the, the cold weather program, I think is what it's called, the Thorn does, that we used to go once a year and, you know, help feed folks, because that, that program specifically is one that allows a family unit to stay together and stay sheltered for a temporary period while they, inside of a church, while they help, you know, you get back on your feet, and there's criteria, things that you have to do the whole time you're there to show that you're bettering yourself, or you, you get the boot. And the whole point of it is, is to get you out and, you know, allow the next person who needs a hand up. Programs like that, I think, are what, what society needs, because it gets people to that other side. And those aren't the people that, you know, that you're concerned about in my mind. All these, these kind of programs that I would want us to go after are the ones that do have the criteria and are for people who want the actual help, they don't want to, you know, just do whatever they want, if that makes sense. So I, I don't, I don't see that you're going to see that, in my opinion.
My next question is, you said they couldn't meet the code. Why couldn't they meet the codes?
Well-
I mean, the letter of the code, you said, they all meet the intent of the code, but the letter of the code.
And I, I think, I think the best anecdotal example is sprinkler. You know, sprinklering, retrofitting an existing assembly-use building could be very cost-prohibitive. You know, I, I, unless Kate tells me differently, I don't think the nonprofit operators have money to bring to the table to help with structural retrofits.
Right, and all these buildings were grandfathered in, because most of them are older buildings.
Correct, and, 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 yeah, not, not to say that there couldn't be a facility that, that could meet all, all the letters of IRC and IFC, but IFC, but that, that would seem unlikely, especially with a lot of the, the old, the older structures that, that many of, many of our religious institutions and churches are in the city.
I haven't had an opportunity to ask questions. Here we go. And it may not be questions to answer tonight, just items to think about before moving this forward, should it come back, but the concern on hours, that was one of my questions, is if someone were to park, what would, what would be the parameters? Would it be 12 hours? Would it be 18 hours, 24 hours? And then if they don't leave, is it considered trespassing then? And what if the noise, like if there's noise complaints then coming from surrounding neighborhoods, how do we, how would we handle that? And, and does that mean that the area then revoke, would we revoke their permit? How, I, I mean, that's all kind of things rolling through my mind. I don't know if you have answers now, or?
Yeah, Counselor Evans, I, I think you're right. I mean, that's, that's part of the recommendation from the staff team here is, is to have a legal mechanism, that, that is a permitted use, so it's, 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 it's where the city could, could grant that use, should conditions be met. The city could also revoke that use. This, the city of Boulder has codified temporary emergency sheltering, but they have an element called a good neighbor program. So if, if you have X number of violations, substantiated complaints, you know, whether it's disturbing the peace or, or bad things happening that are having a significant adverse impact on surrounding residential or commercial properties, that permit can be revoked. And, and, and that's hence one of the recommendations on the 180 days. You see a lot of entities in the nonprofits, the 120 days tends to be the cold weather season, so, so this staff recommendation is a little more generous than that. You know, with, as, as Kate mentioned, you know, the rotational nature of these things, you know, maybe going to different, different churches. However, you know, just having that simple renewal period gives, gives a formal chance for the interdisciplinary staff team to look and say, you know, were there significant neighborhood complaints that were substantiated? Were there some sketchy safety things that, that happened? And, and just, you know, contemplate, you know, if, if, if all is well, that the renewal goes forward, if not, that maybe a different decision is made.
Okay, that's helpful. For, I, I don't know who asked it, but I would want to know how many that we would be approving in a surrounding area? Would it be, because, I mean, we can clearly see from the map, it's, faith-based organizations are concentrated towards southern Westminster. So would it be, would, would we say we want five in the city and then we start it out? Or would we want to say, you know, we want two up north, two on the east, two in the west, and two, like how would we kind of think about organizing that, so?
That, that's a good question, and, and there are different land use mechanisms that, that our planners are way better than me at. However, you know, overlay districts, I mean, probably wouldn't be something as crazy as a specific plan district. However, I'll point to the city of Fort Collins. You know, their city council's just made a decision to have no more than three operating at any one time. So, so I, I, you know, and I would look to Mr. Frankel, to, you know, just, just, I mean, as, as far as the legality of that, because, you know, typically, a use is given to, to, you know, we're talking religious institutional use here, how, however-
Yeah, Eric, I guess I'd wonder, the Fort Collins example, is it just a, a number? Another way we could consider that would be the spacing requirements, and you could say, you know, that's one of the criteria, that you are at least this distance from another sheltering. So if you were concerned that they were going to cluster too close together and have some kind of cumulative impact, this is an opportunity, I'd say, for council to set the rules for this program through the code. You could say, here are the criteria for this conditional use program, and one of them could be a, a spacing requirement. That way, you'd, you'd mitigate the, the cumulative impact issue.
I think you'd want to do a survey and see if you even have anybody. We've been working on this since 2013, and it's sort of dropped off. I, I can think of a couple that might jump in, but we may have nobody at this point.
Mr. Otzelberger's agenda memo may be a reference to maybe one at this time.
Yeah, and, and, you know, Kate's closer to it than I am, but, but, you know, Kate, when we were talking about this, you know, she, you know, we were aware of one that might be interested. However, you know, we, we did not want to put that info out publicly because it sounds like pastor hasn't had a chance to really vet this with, with his or her board. So it, it, it's, just, just so council's aware, I mean, because of course, you know, you're, you're dealing with a lot of issues. It's not like anyone's beating down the proverbial door right now on, on this, and, and Mayor, as you said, I mean, this has been a long-
When Westy Care's formed, that was their first priority, but we've moved off of that because it didn't happen, couldn't happen, so that was since 2013, so they've moved on and doing other things.
This gets back to Counselor Baker's question, as far as vehicles, parking, I mean, is this an opportunity then to maybe use it as an area, or if you don't have a vehicle, you can pitch a tent? Right, is that something that, um, you can't be on our open space property, but you can go to a faith-based organization that has opportunities for space? Is that something that we could think about? I mean, what if you don't have a car and you want to pitch a tent?
Well, so, so, you know, the, the building code and fire code deal with, with permanent structures, you know, that on, I mean, is, you know, as far as regular tenting and outside occupants, it, 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 you know, frequency, magnitude, things like that would all have to be looked at. I mean, there, there, there have been discussions, you know, related to, you know, in some other jurisdictions where you see pellet shelters or tiny homes, you know, things of that nature, accessory dwelling units. That ADUs are a much broader policy discussion beyond transitional housing, you know, and so, so, I mean, trying to, not to say that, that, that couldn't be looked at, but I think a lot of the same things, you know, whether it's hygiene, safety, adjacent neighborhood impact, a lot of the things with the safe parking initiative all come into play with, you know, whether it's a tent or a car, you know, similar, similar consideration.
Eric, I think the criteria could contemplate that. You know, if we wanted to be able to consider some creative proposals, the criteria could still provide the framework for that, I think.
Okay.
How, how are you going to ensure the safety of people on your property, however they're there, whether they're in a car, they're in your structure, or they're tenting in your grass? You'd probably still want to know about the, the hygiene, you know, what kind of restroom facilities are available, what kind of steps is the nonprofit taking to ensure that, that this is done appropriately?
Okay, and then, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. My final question is, would this something, and this kind of revolves around my meeting with the airport earlier today about how, you know, in closing documents, they have the disclosure that they're living next to an airport, right? So would this then, if we approve permitting for this or change codes to allow this, would this then be a reportable item for if someone is purchasing a home in a surrounding area? Would that be a disclosure? I'm just thinking from, as a single woman who purchased a home, like I would want to understand my surroundings, if that makes sense.
I, I am not aware of, of that sort of disclosure with any adjacent neighboring community. I, I am aware of, you know, like, like Boulder with their good neighbor ordinance, there's, there's, and there's some in other parts of the country, some, some jurisdictions that require notification. Well, I'm, looking at the cities, so we're talking conditional use, looking at the city's special use permitting process, it's, that's a little bit different, but, but there are similar principles in each, there's required public notification. But as, as Mr. Frankel advised wisely with, you know, spacing requirements, I mean, this is, this is really city councils to consider the policy direction overall you want to go, and then with some of the specifics, there, there could be, you know, some sort of notification as, as part of a permitting process. You know, once again, you, you don't, we don't see that in conditional use with some of these existing items because of fair housing federal law requirements. However, on a special use side of the house, there are, but that doesn't mean that for certain conditional uses, if you decided to go down this road, we couldn't have a, you know, pick, pick a radius for, for public notification, that, that, that could be a requirement. And, and, or, or even, you know, it looks, some jurisdictions have had kind of like land use matters, a, a required neighborhood meeting, things of that nature. So, so a lot of those same tools could be applied towards something like this. What, it, you know, it's, it's, just, just being honest, it's, it's a significant amount of work that, you know, it's, 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 yeah, to, to truly vet it, vet it out, you know, it, it could, and, and I, you know, might not generate the most excited responses from, from neighbors.
Eric, I could just add, I think the nature of a conditional use is such that it's not a permanent, ongoing use. And I think when you're talking about recording in the chain of title, warnings to folks who live near an airport or live near a wa- a wastewater treatment plant, I think that was another relatively recent example where there was the thought those warnings should be in the chain of titles, so that anyone acquires a house is on notice of that being an ongoing use. I, I think that permanency of those uses is, is a different scenario from a conditional use, which is a 180-day duration. So I think Mr. Otzelberger's point about doing the neighborhood, if, if one of the criteria is you're going to have a neighborhood meeting, because it's important that your neighbors understand the nature of your conditional use application, that, that might be the more effective way to ensure that you're reaching people at the time this use is proposed, rather than, you know, recording something with the, the county clerk that will only be discovered years later when the property changes hands and the title comes- when the property changes hands and the title comes.
It is getting late, and we still have three issues, and we have people that are sick. So what do you want to do?
Probably we can go ahead and investigate this a little more and put parameters around it. Like, I really don't have much problem with the car thing.
What else do you need?
So, so the key question here is, the next recommended step would be actually drafting code language to return to you with that would be suggested to amend WMC. So, yeah, I guess the question, you know, is it, should we or should we not?
Before we do that, can we do a monkey survey or something of these organizations?
See if they want to do it.
May become a mute issue.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly, you know, bust out the Survey Monkey or the Survey, you know, orangutan or whoever, you know, to help us out, you know, to just kind of see. I mean, like I said, it's just, it's, you know, we haven't, we could just ask some direct questions on that interest.
I would keep it simple and just say this is, we just need to know if we even are going to go down this rapid hole.
Yep. Just, I was just going to say, I like the separation idea or the, you know, considering distribution. But also, Councilor Emmens just made me think of, can we make sure the cars aren't idling all night? Because I just think about the air quality impact from that.
And generators can be a concern as well with the RVs.
Okay.
Councilor Demong?
Just thinking that's going to depend on how cold it is.
I know.
I'm for looking at this. I mean, like I said, I'd be interested in how we can allow faith-based groups to decide for themselves what they want to do for boats, but.
Councilor Nammala?
Yeah, I'm up for it.
Continue to the next piece.
Yeah, I think that sometimes it's the chicken or the egg problem, right? Where we may not have had organizations that came to us because they knew we didn't, that it wasn't allowed, and they just gave up on us, right? And depending on whether, if we have, if we do pass this and allow it, I think that if there is an organization in the future, say we have a really bad winter next year that wants to do it, they wouldn't have to come to council and then we have this conversation over again. So, yeah, so absolutely, we should do it.
Mr. Rich? Oh, yeah. Mr. Rich? Hello? Thumbs up. So do you need anything else?
No, that will do it. Thank you very much for your time.
Next up, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation tonight, but I can speak to this briefly and then turn it over for questions and discussion, if that's helpful. To put it into context, what we're discussing tonight is agenda memo entitled Elimination of Salaryed Positions in the City Manager's Office, the Innovation and Communication Division, and departmental leadership positions to fund critical city programs and services. And what I would say is that this is, has been a concerted effort to aggregate a collection of positions in those three areas for the city to bring forward to city council to consider. The timing is important from our perspective because it is in the advance of summer, so would allow us with your, with your direction to redeploy the salary position funds in time for summer. And that would apply to all of the positions listed. So I can, I can walk through, I think it would be important. I do have one handout, which is Revised Organization Chart, which will reflect the new interim structure, and I'll hand that out. So what is being offered up for your consideration is a collection of salary positions, eight in the City Manager's office. That includes the Innovation Communication Division, and I can just list those off. There's only one position this time, the funding for which will be a one-time offering. Every other one, just because of the nature of that position. And the others are all being offered up as permanent and ongoing savings, and we'd have to come back to city council to change the pay plan to do that. So the first position in the City Manager's office is mine, the Deputy City Manager position. And because I'm here on the interim basis as City Manager, that one will be left vacant but unfilled, and that's being offered up as a temporary savings at this time. We also have a permanent offering of the City Manager Intern. That would be an elimination of that position that's vacant. We also have the DEI LAP, that stands for Diversity Equity Inclusivity Slash Language Access Plan or Program Coordinator. That's a vacant position in the City Manager's office. That would be eliminated permanently. We also have an Executive Aid in the City Manager's office. That's my former aide position, and that's being vacated because the employee has taken another position through an internal recruitment in another area. We also have an Administrative Assistant Position in the City Manager's office, which is also vacant. In the Innovation and Communication Division, which resides in the City Manager's office, we have the Innovation and Communications Manager position, which is being offered up on a permanent basis. That position is, will be vacant as of June 2nd. The Innovation Coordinator position is vacant, and that's offered up permanently. And the, and an Administrative Assistant Position also in that division is being offered up. In addition, we are presenting salary, sorry, service and supply cuts to the Innovation and Communication Division to go along with that. And in total, in the Innovation Communication, that's a $540,000 savings. I should have mentioned the City Manager's office changes is a $690,000 savings. I would now go into the other category. There's four positions to be permanently removed at your direction. The first is Finance Director, that's a vacated position, currently vacant. And on an interim basis for some time now, Mr. Dorr, our Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, has taken over the duties of Finance Director, so those have now been melded into his position. So we are offering up the Finance Director position to be removed. Those duties will all continue to be performed by Mr. Dorr in his current position. General Services Director, already vacated and vacant. Those duties have been taken on, on an interim basis, now permanent by Mr. Chris Lindsay here at the table with us tonight. Chris Lindsay is Assistant City Manager, and he oversees the Policy and Budget Department. We've now merged those two departments together into one larger department under Mr. Lindsay's leadership, and are offering up the General Services Director position on a permanent basis. That will bring us from 11 department head positions across the city to nine, which is a more historic level for us, the department head level. Also offered up our executive assistant position in the Policy and Budget Department, that's vacant. Policy and Budget Coordinator position in the Policy and Budget Department, and that's also vacant. Through reorganizations in our Parks Recreation and Libraries Department, we have reorganized and amalgamated divisions there and are offering up an Open Space Manager position, which is a Division Manager position on a permanent basis, to be eliminated. In total, that's four positions, and those add up to $970,000. And in total, all of those reductions total $2.2 million. What we're recommending for immediate redeployment of those funds is as follows. To enhance our co-responder program by adding an additional co-responder. And at this time, we are contemplating bringing that program from a contract service to an in-house service, and that's something that we would look at a little bit more. But at this time, that's how it's been budgeted for those to be four. That would bring the total co-responder count to four, and those would be, in this funding model, four internal positions. We are also offering up a Homeless Navigator addition, and that would increase our Homeless Navigator Response Team by one. We are also adding, suggesting to add a Park Ranger. The Park Ranger is the other part of homelessness response, and that's a bit more on the authoritative and open space control part of things. And when we looked at the needs of our homeless response, this was, this was the feedback from staff that if we balance between an additional navigator and an additional ranger, we'll get a much more responsive team to address the issues that we're seeing. We've also added a Report Specialist for our Police Department, and this is something that city council identified very overtly through the strategic planning process as a very necessary position to assist our officers in having more time in the field and less time writing reports. We've also, at the request and suggestion of the chief, added a body-worn camera technician with the full deployment now of body cameras in our police department. This is a position that will fully support our police officers in the use of this equipment. Much of the work arises at the backend of that, where the data is collected, stored, and there's different levels of storage requirements depending on the application of that information.
During the open house, I was shocked at what I was involved in that. Amazing.
Yes, and so this, again, full support for our officers in the field with that technology. And then a Police Department Application Specialist, which will increase the FTE disposition from one existing to two total. And that's a position that primarily supports the department's software solutions, including computer-aided dispatch, or CAD, or CAD, records management system, which is called RMS, and more to come. And so that's a very backbone position for the department, and we're recommending immediate increasing staffing there. In the balance of the funds, which is actually $1.29 million in addition to what I just described, would be recommended to go into our Street Maintenance Program. That would primarily offset the cost of escalation that council recently saw and approved in two contracts, which was 17%. So this move would, in rough terms, allow us to break even with our streets work this year. And we're, I think, going to talk a little bit later tonight about other funding sources, but that one is viewed to be very critical for our streets maintenance activities. And with that, I would draw your attention to the Revised Organization Chart, which is not all the positions I described, but it does, it does set out the new interim structure arising from the elimination of these positions. You can see to the left of that organization chart, under my vacant position, a large box which is shown under review. And that is the active work that Mr. Hegrenis is leading for us in terms of restructuring the resources in that team. And I think what we're, what we're landing on is a model that I think is much more traditional for this city, and that is Communications Lead reporting directly to the City Manager with a tight communication team, and then those other resources that were formerly in Parks Recreation and Libraries to return to Parks Recreation and Libraries in a more traditional structure. So that's, that's the overview of that. Again, I mentioned that you'll see a pared-down department head team, that's taking from 11 down to nine positions. The amalgamation of four departments into two is included in there. All of those additional positions that I described as being added in that you are considering would, because of the offset of the salary reductions, be able to be accomplished at no additional cost. The timing is good ahead of summer. As I've mentioned, it's also good ahead of your ARPA discussion later tonight, and you're heading into a very significant budget process this year. So this will really alleviate some of, some of the pressures to get our services addressed in some of these critical areas, and should allow you a more open hand when you approach the ARPA and the budget discussions in terms of this, some of these things will already be in place by the time you get to the budget process. So with that, I'm happy to then address some pre-questions that we had. And I think those came in from Councilor Nammala. If you'd like, I can hit those first.
And Councilor Demong had something. You want to go over the written ones first, that's fine.
We wanted to start with those, and then we can, because the staff have already got the answers for these ones. The first question from Councilor Nammala is, are any of these positions currently filled and would therefore result in a layoff of an existing employee? So I've described that all these positions are vacant or in the process of vacating through, one was an internal recruitment for another position, and the other person's finishing date is June 2nd. A next one talks about this question. I'm assuming that a justification for each of these positions was provided to create budget for the position. What is the justification for no longer needing these positions? I think just listing these out without any reasoning shows a lack of due diligence on our part as council if we were to accept these without that understanding. What I would say is, this is a city manager-driven initiative, and it's in response to the new city council vision, mission, and strategic plan. And if I could, in the memo, what I tried to do was speak to that directly in the, in the closing. Very small font. In addition to speaking to the strategic plan directly, it does speak directly to two of your recently adopted guiding principles. And the one, of course, is very prominent, is the Stewardship and Thrift Guiding Principle. And that's the principle of stewardship and thrift by responsibly managing all of the resources entrusted to our care to meet the needs of today without sacrificing the ability to meet the needs of the future, as well as the guiding principle of innovate and initiate by fostering a culture of continuous improvement and approaching opportunities and challenges with drive, inventive thinking, and resourcefulness resulting in a resilient and sustainable future for our city. So this is taking the opportunities of vacancies and staff departures and reorganizations and pairing it up with the challenges that we're facing today to bring forward this set of recommendations.
I have a little comment. That doesn't still answer the fact that these had justifications, and now we are removing these positions without saying what were they bringing or what were they failing to bring. The, but I'm, I appreciate what we're doing in taking that innovative approach. I would say my next question's regarding the DEI position in particular, our counter to that second approach or goal that you just stated.
Maybe I could speak to, if I could, to the DEI questions. There are, there are two of them, and I can recite them together and then address them. First one is, why are we removing a DEI position during a time where it is so critical to maintain and attract staff? The second is, was a DEI study for the organization ever conducted? And if it was, what were the recommendations? So if I could address that, those are two very good questions for us. Following the work from the Strategic Plan and the Guiding Principle of Diversity Equity and Inclusion, I can report that this guiding principle is already embedded in our work and in our ethos. It's embedded in the work of the Human Resources Department and being co-led by the City Manager's Office. We did do a benchmarking study in 2021, and we're in the beginning stages of taking the next steps to provide training on DEI opportunities in the organization. Additionally, a longstanding effort of ours, multi-years in process, is the Language Access Plan. And those efforts continue to be made by a cross-functioning city team, multi-departments with representatives from each department in the city through a variety of initiatives from facility signage, training across the organization, and translations of all of our key documents and service access portals. Also, as an employer of choice, it's a priority for the city to value diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the city of Westminster, of course, is an equal opportunity employer that values diversity and aims to have its workforce reflect the community. I would also add that the city recently hired a new employee development coordinator who is working closely with HR to continue to prioritize and expand DEI efforts throughout the organization, so bringing a new training regime. And then if I could, cite from the DEI study that you asked about. So the city undertook a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Workforce Benchmark Study by using the firm CPS HR in 2021. Those recommendations were shared with the city staff in early 2022 this year, and key stakeholder groups were involved in DEI efforts throughout the organization. And I've now reviewed the recommendations and shared additional insights on those. And we're now meeting in Q2 of this year to strategize and draw up our next steps in the process. I would close with the, one of the primary recommendations that CPS HR made arising from that study was this one, that the city should provide learning and education programs to educate all team members on foundational tenets of DEI and cultural intelligence, promoting the utilization of a common language and understanding around DEI. of DEI and cultural intelligence promoting the utilization of a common language and understanding around DEI. So the core work for us that we're embarking on with our new training coordinator is to embark on that training and education work with our workforce and that's underway. So that's the long answer to the study question.
So the justification that we had originally for that DEI position is no longer valid? Because we're, we've already, we're already doing it?
I would say we're well into the DEI journey and we've got a, we've got a cross staff, cross departmental engagement with all of our workforce. I'm not going to say we're anywhere near being done, but we're at the very beginning of the new part of the journey, which is the education and outreach with our, with our community, our employee community. But we, we began with a survey, a very comprehensive one, and we've now mined that survey for the next steps and this is, this is the next step and it is already underway. So we've shifted from the original concept to go to more of an embedded concept. It's very similar, in fact, to how we structured sustainability. So we have very, very lean resources with our, we have two positions in sustainability. And yet it's embedded in our strategic plan and all of our work and it's really, it really guides all of our departments now. So we went with the embedded model there. It's a slower uptake, but it's a deeper connection over time.
And I did have one more question, I'm sorry, it was just about the open space manager. In my past role here, I understood the open space manager to be the person who was managing real estate acquisitions and where we were going next with open space growth. And clearly that's not, you know, something we're not going to pursue. So why are we getting rid of that position?
No, I appreciate the question and actually if I could ask Tomas to join us at the table. Tomas, working with his team, has prepared and implemented a very thoughtful reorganization of the department to actually refocus our efforts in the areas that we really need them with open space remaining a very, very high priority. It's just being structured and retitled differently, so Tomas, if you could describe that very briefly for us.
Sure, so just in looking at the department and looking at some odd siloing, unnecessary siloing between open space and parks and golf. There was an opportunity to eliminate some of that duplication and unnecessary siloing and have that kind of come together under the leadership of the remarkable Lance Johnson. So that's a, one of the benefits to this. In terms of the open space acquisition, the first, the team that has been doing that remains in place. Exactly the same people, Joe Reale, who's the open space superintendent, still the open space superintendent. Kristen, Kristen May, who works for him and does a lot of the sort of work on that side, remains in place. And then we partner with other city agencies to accomplish our open space acquisitions, which also remains in place. So I, I feel like we've created a more lean and agile department with this. And so I don't think we're going to miss a, a single step along the way and still be able to very much accomplish what you set out for us to do.
Thank you. Mayor Putnam?
Thank you for all the hard work on this, first off. I think when we talk about organizational needs and getting back to core services, I think you've done good work here. One of the things that I think a high functioning agency does when they have new needs, they look to see if there are unneeded needs to pay for those needs. And that's what I see you doing here. I will say that, you know, is, you know, call it the elephant in the room, this is a very different council. And so some of us have been saying that there has been bloat at the top levels of this government and the people agreed through this last election. If everybody doesn't agree at the table, that's fine also that this is the way to go, but the reality is this certainly is something I've campaigned on prior to even my last reelection starting. So I think that this addresses some of that top level bloat pretty firmly. And it gets back to putting that money back into core services, which is what this government in my mind is supposed to do. If you have one concern I wanted to ask about as far as the reallocation co responder program, which I'm a big fan of, I have some concerns and you don't have to address them tonight, but bringing that in house and what challenges come from that coming in house versus being with an organization like Community Reach that already knows how to handle some of those record keeping and passes it on to the next person as you connect people to resources. And potential challenges or risks with, you know, the city becoming the one who holds those documents or those kind of records. So I'm sure that there's some sort of cost savings in the front end, but I'm not, not sure holistically how that looks and what kind of risk we're taking on by not utilizing a partner like Community Reach. And so I wanted to at least bring it up now before we, you know, get to final allocation of this. And if you have answers to that tonight, great, but if, if not, that is one area that I would like to understand a little bit better before we move forward.
Councilor Zadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions, starting with DEI. So you mentioned Jody, the embedded model, the deeper. Sure, but with DEI, right, and inclusivity and that whole area of work, it, you can't just say we're already doing the work and we're embedding in policy, so therefore we don't need leadership at the top who's monitoring, who's making sure it's happening. Leadership changes, right? So employees leave, city managers leave, council leaves and changes. The point is you, you have someone or a team of people, like some cities do, who are monitoring and looking at it with intentionality, right? On an ongoing basis to make sure that no matter what happens in the overall environment, there, there's someone or someones or several people who are making sure that across your city, across the programs that we do, we are implementing inclusive policy and, and program. And I think it's a cop out, no offense, to say that we are embedding it in how we do work. Well, yeah, that's, that's what, that's literally how everything works, right? It's embedded, but if you want to make change, it changes that extra step of making sure that we're not just saying it, you know? That the policy just, that we have a documented policy that says it. We actually have to walk the walk and make sure that we're monitoring it. You know, that's why it's so important that Councilor Nermal's question on, well, then what was the original justification for wanting that position? By the way, that's a vacant position, right?
Correct.
So her question was, if we thought we needed one and now we say we don't. My hunch is there's no way in a year or however long it took to have that vacant position open, that we have all of a sudden embedded diverse, you know, diversity and inclusion in all our policies, so we're fine. So I don't think, I think that's one very significant area that we should look at again. We need a DEI officer. We, we need to make sure we have leadership at the top, which would be this person who's making, who's communicating through the city manager, through the leadership, through, through your whole leadership that things are moving along, policies are being inclusive, et cetera. So that's one piece. My second question is on process. I've heard anecdotally from this council over the last few, few, few months that, you know, some, some of them want the communications department reduced or eliminated. And now all of a sudden I see a box called under review that, that surrounds the communications department. So my whole question is, how is that good process? I don't remember voting on, hey, Jody, and I know it's not our role, but at the same time, we never really gave direction. Just because we say things anecdotally, I don't know where the step was where we said, okay, some of them want this, so therefore I'm not going to review the entire department. And I'm, I'm assuming you don't mean layoffs here, correct?
Yeah, there are, there are no layoffs moving forward. There's, there, what I, what I outlined were vacant positions already in place. And the under review does not mean reduction of staff. It means a reorganizing of our resources. And really to go back to a model that this organization is very, very familiar with, that precedes this, the current structure, which is to have the communications lead report to the city manager. It's the way it was here for a very, very long time. It was that way when I joined the city. So this would bring the communication team back under the city manager directly, which is best practices when we, when we consulted with human resources and did benchmarking in, with other cities. That was, that was the preferred model, step communication come back under. We never filled, we never refilled the innovation coordinator position. And, and the innovation section is also, as I already described, that position has been vacant for some time. And so we're offering that up, but the positions in here are ones that we would redeploy rather than remove.
So from a people management standpoint, if I'm in this group of people with a box around me that's called under review, I'm looking at other jobs. Because it's clear to me, so I know that's not what you're saying, but usually in the private sector at least, when you say under review and you have people's names under there, it means they are under review. They could go, they could be redeployed, they could be fired, et cetera. I would just stress with your team that this is not what that means. Because looking at this, it looks very perilous and that's not what you're saying, so.
Right, and may I also add, Councilor, that very, very grateful to Ryan Heggers, who, who has agreed to stay on until June 2nd. He's working very, very closely with this team on that redeployment that I described. So they're highly engaged in this work and they've been consulted. They've had, they've been providing input around the re, the reorganization of these resources. So we have taken some very, very overt steps to pre address that concern from developing.
Okay. And last question, has there been a cost rationalization analysis overall? Just, not just at your leadership level, but my point is twofold, one is I think making such dramatic changes right before we hire a city manager might not be the best path. You know, if you're a city manager and you're coming in, you might want to make these decisions on your own. You know, you want to analyze the whole staff and make sure that we have the right people in the right places, et cetera. I think doing this preemptively, knowing that we just posted this role and someone's going to come on, we want to give them some, some autonomy to make these decisions rather than shifting things around right before they get here. They may not agree with this, they, you see what I'm saying? So that's one thing that I think from a process standpoint. If ours, a new city manager coming onto a city, I would want to know, all right, what's the whole, not just leadership level? What, give me the whole staffing, you know, plan, future strategy, let me make the decisions because wouldn't we want to empower them to, to do that? And so that's my comment there.
I'd like to jump in here and, Councilor Zadi, I hear your, the thought process, right? Because all of us, or at least us three, have similar thinking as far as the thought process goes. But I, I like to offer that we did get direction and we did vote as a council and that came in our strategic plan. And what our city manager just said was that he was meeting us at our strategic plan, at our guiding principles, at our vision, at our mission and objectives under that. And so to me, that's direction. Or up here, our staff and our city manager is taking that direction and moving forward with it. So I know from a personal level, working in the government sector for over 10 years, there can absolutely be too many cooks in the kitchen, in the kitchen. You, I was in a department where I was underutilized because there was too many people and I left because of it. Because I didn't feel like I had the opportunity to have my skill sets utilized because there was too many and there was not enough work for me to do. So keep that in mind, that it's not just reducing, that there could be actual, I think Tomas had nailed it on the head as far as like the description, but agility in maneuvering your staff as such, right? And then the dramatic changes before, you mentioned dramatic changes before a city manager comes on board. But just four months ago, we gave our interim city manager direction that he is our city manager. Right now, he is acting city manager and we gave him that authority to act as such. And so I feel that that's kind of going back and now we're in that gray area thing. Wait a minute, don't do it before a new city manager comes on board. So while I hear your concerns, I think that, I think we have to go back to, we're going to get lost as a council if we don't stick to our strategic, our strategic plan. And that's, we spent hours and weeks on it and I think that that is important for us. If we're not in that parameter, we don't look at it at this time. That's just my, that's just my thought. I do have a little bit of concerns when it comes to communication. That's just the bias because that's my career.
So, Councilor Seymour, before you get too tired, do you have anything?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I want to, I want to thank my colleagues for their thoughts. But I especially want to thank Jody for bringing this package to us. And it is that, it's, it's a package and a realignment from a budgetary standpoint as much as anything. I, I saw our government, our city government, since August of 2016 changed dramatically. And this, this is, this is a realignment. Those things happen, I see it happen in the corporate world. We go here, we realign, we cross function, this is going to be better. You don't know until you do it. So I, I see this, though it's not a, a step over the prefaces. It, it works well because there's no one losing a job. And so these are things, if something doesn't work or if we have too much work or things cannot be done, then we can look at that and, and backfill as needed. But right now with not, you know, not costing anyone a job or a position, we've been able to rightsize our leadership and put positions, fill positions that are needed and then dump another 1.29 million in streets just, just to keep up with cost. So those are my thoughts in general. The, the, the small parts of the plan are, are up to the city manager to execute then. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Baker, anything?
Really hard as job in the local government, thank you for doing it. It only gets worse from here.
I think for me, instead of seeing it as a negative for possible somebody new coming in, it actually, they can come in and look at this and better put their footprint on it than the way it sits today. So, Jody, I just have to say to you, I've watched interims and sometimes it's just, we get through each day and, and nothing bad about it or anything, but you have been bold and you have done some things that, and you've been here, so you know the changes that have been made. You know the rationale and/or reasoning, if there was any. And you brought us something to par, par down some of the things that some have talked to you about and we've mentioned in many meetings, so I just say thank you. And anybody else have anything?
I, I do want to emphasize, I'm not opposed to all of the cuts. There's, you know, there's a bit of a lack of process here and, you know, the taking out any justifications, not providing justifications for new positions, that to me just, you know, I know you're doing this quickly, so that would be some diligence to be performed as you move forward into this. I truly do want to see the DEI position retained. I don't think it needs to be, just because it's vacant, needs to be lopped off with the rest of the arm that you're lopping off here. I highly doubt that our HR training coordinator has significant experience and expertise in DEI. They can certainly look up some classes for people to take, but I doubt that it's going to be that leadership and as well informed as would benefit. A city staff that right now it's difficult to hire, we don't have a great track record in the past of, you know, having a culture that does retain folks throughout the city. I think this DEI position could help our service providers, you know, whether that's police and fire. Or just filling our, filling our employment coffers with people who want to be here. So that is the only thing that I would emphasize out of all of these. I do worry about the policy and budget coordinator, but I'm assuming you'll have a justification for how that's covered.
I just want to know, are we pulling as is, are we changing? Because I like it as is.
As is. Isn't it just informational, yeah? We don't get a say, do we? I think it's up to you.
We have to vote on the budget change. So just, just some historical, since we're saying that this is somehow out of due process or whatever. When some of these new departments were spun up, they were brought from the city manager at the time and said, here's my new plan. Because the city manager runs the city. And so he brought that plan, it had a dollar amount, it was mid-year budget allocation change. And the majority of the council minus one, that we liked that plan and we're going to go with it. You see, this is no different unless I'm missing something, this is, we want to reallocate, we're going to take those savings from these vacant positions that we don't want to fill. We're going to fill these positions that we feel the justification matches up with your strategic plan and what we've heard from the majority of the council.
I'll be voting on the reallocation, not on his cuts or his.
Right, because it's a package, is the way I see it, you're right.
If I could just help out in that, in the memo from Mr Andrews, it reads pending city council's direction on this reallocation. Staff will return with budget supplemental appropriation, amended pay plan and appropriate Westminster code update. So the direction is on this proposed plan and then we'll return with enacting legislation in a formal council meeting for votes, similar to as you were describing, mayor. Thank you, thank you pardon.
Can we put the DEI back in? Would be my ask.
I would, I would go as it's the way it is.
And David, you said as is?
As is.
Mister Seymour? As is or add the DEI?
I'll accept the package as presented.
Councillor Ozidi?
I do not accept the package because I would like DEI in there.
Councillor Nammella?
Same, I do not accept it, I want the DEI in there as well.
Okay, so. Jody, I think you have your answer, you've got the majority that wanted to move forward.
The mayor and council, so what we'll do is, as Mr Dorr just described, we'll bring the appropriate recommendations back to city council. Three categories which you described, so we'll put that work together for you and bring that back.
You will, thank you.
Anything to add?
ARPA?
As we transition into ARPA, may I thank our facilities people for rallying for us tonight? I don't know if you all noticed, but the heat rose in here to 76 degrees. And so I would just like to call out Dave Thorley and his team who came back in to reset the whole system for us tonight, so thank you.
And you're using the cold one.
Number of us are thinking the same thing.
All orchestrated by this, this is a nice segue, all orchestrated by Chris Lindsay here, who, as I described earlier, oversees facilities as part of his general services mantle and.
Way to run a tight ship.
I will now turn it over to him to lead us to our ARPA work, if you're ready for that, mayor.
I should also say, Dave clearly got the coffee pots running at five o'clock last Wednesday morning at the employee breakfast. He's a critical employee. Well, good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem and city council. Staff has returned to you tonight to seek direction on a reallocation of the remaining freed up general capital improvement funds. That were received as part of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We just, you have a couple of your budget staff in front of you, I'd also add, our main point of contact for our, all of our work on COVID recovery. Michael Carlo, part of our team is attending virtually tonight, also to help answer questions. So the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law on May 11th, 2021. The city of Westminster was allocated 14 and a half million dollars. Half of that was received in May of last year and half is expected to be received in May of this year. The funds are to be used by the end of 2024 for the purposes that are listed on the slide. I'm going to skip ahead quickly because we took an action that'll, that'll make this a little clearer, if we could move to the next slide, please. So we've taken a number of actions around the American Rescue Plan, you have taken a number of actions around the American Rescue Plan. So last October, council approved resolution number 44, which directed staff to use those rescue plan funds for revenue backfill. So that essentially freed up 14 and a half million dollars from those federal requirements. So that, I think is a key portion of tonight's discussion and allowed us to use those funds for really any lawful municipal purpose. In October and November of last year, council approved ARPA project allocations. Those appropriations were made into projects. Since that time, council has provided direction on a couple of other specific areas. We had a meeting regarding the city hall zirkscaping project in January. As we were going through the 2022 water rates discussion, council directed staff to allocate 15 million dollars in a mix of carryover. And rescue plan funds towards the water utility fund. And then in April, council directed staff to spend part of those freed up funds on retention bonuses for public safety personnel. We could go to the next slide, please. So this slide and what's in the agenda memorandum tonight provides a bit of a project status overview. So the original allocation was approved by council last year is in that originally allocated column. Any action taken since that time is noted in the committed column. I think I've addressed all of those that are in the committed column except the communications and audio visual, or audio video improvements, excuse me. It's been a hot button topic for council and staff to get working on the AB needs in this room and the council chambers, channel eight as well. So that one has been moving forward at a rapid pace.
Is that one going to change because of costs?
No ma'am, in fact, I believe we're going to have some funds freed up from that. I think we're going to be at about $600,000 total on that project. So we're going to free up about $400,000, we've been working with the team just within the last couple of days to make sure we nail down the final couple of costs there. So tonight, we're looking for council, from any discussion you have, any direction you would like to provide staff. On how to move forward with these freed up rescue plan funds. Certainly, there's a number of immediate needs, we just talked about a number of those. That we would be happy to take direction from and move forward at city council's request. We also outlined some of those in the memorandum. If there's anything remaining, something the staff is planning for the budget process this year is to come back in June to talk about our capital plan. Our capital plan for 2023 and moving forward. We could hold back some of those funds and choose to allocate them through the capital budget process. Or certainly provide direction in June, if you would like. That's a couple of options for your direction tonight and certainly we're willing to entertain and execute on any direction that you have. And that's, that concludes my presentation.
Councillor Baker?
I would like to see the bulk of the funds go to the streets.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Can we go back to the previous slide, please?
Can this go to, I'm assuming this can go back to programs that we cut during COVID and I specifically am calling out the big trash pickup? Is that something that we can lend dollars to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was also, I don't disagree, I think streets is important. I was trying to figure out a way to maybe lend some dollars to our municipal court. I don't know if that falls in the parameters as far as the criteria that we could use it for. But I know our court needs some TLC. So I would like to maybe put that out there as an option if it fits the criteria. Otherwise, I don't disagree that it can meet street needs.
Dave, do you want to speak to that criteria?
So yes, so when the funds were by resolution allocated to offset lost revenues, I believe is the language on the earlier slide in the deck here. The entire 14.5 was then drawn for a legitimate purpose as identified in ARPA. So now that the city is in possession of the 14.5, city can use it for any valid municipal purpose. So yes, to the courthouse as an option, if that's what council wants.
Does the courthouse need any AB needs as well? I know some, I know Adams County is still doing some kind of hybrid options, I don't know what that looks like for us, but.
I certainly, I don't believe we would refuse those funds. I know we talked about a different video connection system today, but I think that would be rather small dollars compared to some other projects.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to like brainstorm like how we can maybe help.
Along the same line, so I'm curious on that specifically that though. Are we actively trying to figure out what the long-term plan for the court is? And like, how long can we sustain if we put money at the current one? Because I know some of the challenges are just the way the building's laid out. But, you know, since we kind of hunted that a bit down the field, call it. What are we doing actively to look at that? I know at one time, council asked about potentially like repurposing a different building that maybe we own or something in the city. Do we have any sense around that?
So facilities management division and the court and the presiding municipal judge and the other folks that work at the court. And Dave's office and the police department, they're all working together on a project with an architect consultant. To figure out how much it would cost to refresh the building, the current building, to bring it up to current ADA standards. Number of bathrooms, courtrooms, a number of those items, modern day electrical code. We have electrical problems down there fairly frequently. So they're taking a look at that and going through a rather extensive process there to see what we can do within the existing building. The thought process there is to come back to council at a later date with, this is what it would cost to renovate as is. And this is an idea of how much it would cost to replace it as a separate location.
Cool, I appreciate the fact that you're doing that. Because I wouldn't be opposed to putting some of the money towards that fund. Other thing that I was curious about, because I think, you know, back to core services, streets is something that we need to put some more money into. But I would want to know, like, because I have heard in the past, there's some logistics behind, just because you have the money doesn't mean we can get the project done. So if we have competing needs and things that we can actually get done with the money we have on hand, if that makes sense. I'd want to know that, that we could actually do it. So if we truly said, okay, take the rest of the 10, could you actually do something with it in the next year or two? Because one of the other questions I was going to ask, and I'm curious about, so like the city fleet electrification. Not opposed to that ongoing, but was that. Thought in that to just replace things that were at end of life? Because, you know, I certainly want to make sure that we get the use out of things we already spent tax dollars on versus replacing just to go electric.
This is Joe Merson, SCARE Fleet Manager.
Mayor, mayor pro tem, councillor. So we've taken out what we felt is a very systematic approach to our electrification plan. We're planning on 25% of our light duty fleet by 2025, using our current asset replacement plan. So no, the plan is not to replace anything early. Matter of fact, every year when we go into the plan, we review three, three things. The age of the asset, the utilization of the asset and the maintenance repair costs of that asset. We'll make a decision at that point, even though it's up for replacement for the upcoming year, whether to defer it and try to get a little bit more life out of it. Or to go ahead with that replacement. So we would, we would take a look at each one of those assets up for replacement, determine whether or not it's suitable to be electrified using our telematics data. So that takes that decision away from me. And us being able to leverage that data to make the decision whether the asset is suitable for electrification and replacement. We all use that telematics data to determine where our electrification infrastructure needs to be installed. So that'd be, that's the plan moving forward. So there's like a three-pronged approach to our electrification strategy. One is electrify the municipal fleet, offer that charging infrastructure to the public. Whether or not we'll charge them to use it or not, right? And then private adoption of electric vehicles.
Does part of that evaluation look at, say in particular, say you're looking at a light truck and what the useful life of that is versus gas power? Is that part of the calculation?
Yeah, yeah, most definitely, the real key to that is utilization, right? So we have to be able to identify that asset and utilization broken down day by day, right? I could, before we install our telematics platform, I could tell you how many miles or engine hours that thing had on any given year, but I couldn't tell you the day. So we have to understand what the, how often the asset is used, how long those individual trips are. To really determine whether or not the range of an electric vehicle will meet the needs of the application.
Great. That's all the, all the questions I had. So I guess bottom line for me is I would be willing to look at putting more towards street. I don't know that we should put all of it, I'd like to know like, if that's actually feasible, if you did that, if you could actually take all that money and make a quick difference or not. Trying to think if there's any of these other ones that I.
Can I ask you for one clarifying statement? When you say quick difference, what does that mean for you?
I mean, are you going to be able to improve in the next year or two? Or like, could you actually take that money and put it into streets in the next year or two? Understanding it takes time to get contractors, asphalt, all the things that I've heard in the past have been problems specifically over the last two years. You know, because then maybe we're missing out on other areas where we need improvements in core services. I don't, I don't necessarily have any big thoughts around these other ones, but they kind of hinge on whether or not. Because to me, it's the biggest priority and I drive around our city, our streets, they need, they need some help. And I know we're not much different than another city, which I think it's fair to put out there. But we're looking at core services and where we need to put some money behind. I think that streets and the court are two areas that I have interest in. are two areas that I am interested.
And with streets, do sidewalks come under streets? Because I know we have sidewalk needs.
Good point.
If I could help address this point, there will be an absorption limit to the, to the, to the, to the industry for us, and we'll work that with our, with our streets people in terms of how much. It's, it's, it's a two-part equation, how much, and then how long do you have to accomplish that? The industry has just fundamentally turned upside down, as many have through COVID, with material and labor costs, scarcity of materials really impacting, and sometimes it's a lack of willingness of contractors to even express interest in bids anymore. So we'll have to assess that and get back to you, but it's something that the streets team has been actively working on.
I think one other, I appreciate that, and I would like to see what that is, because then you could tell us, here's what we could actually do if you gave us the money. And that actually puts a limitation around what we would put. I wanted to at least point out, and I know that before Counselor Zadi had brought up about increasing the human services board number, I'm not in favor of doing that on the ongoing budget, just because that's not the core thing that, that a municipal government does. I understand there's differing views whether they should or not. My view is that we need to make sure we're putting dollars towards what can be a pretty tight budget on core services. So if we decide to leave in the, this one-time dollars in the human services board was allocated before, I just want to make sure, and this is beyond the bigger discussion if we ever decide to increase that budget, we need to make sure that they understand that this is one-time money, because I know how those nonprofits often work, is if they get that money, you know, they're going to think that there's potential for that next year, and I don't want the nonprofits to get in a bind because this year that we're able to give more than we maybe can next year, or that we typically give. So I think that's going to be an important thing for the human services board if we decide to leave that money allocated to them.
Counselor Smart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we've kind of discussed some of these categories when they first came to us, too. And I, I don't have any problem putting more money to streets if, if it's effective at this point, and it, it sounds like we may have some issues with that. But we've got 4.5 million here, we just added another 1.29 from reorganization that can go there. So that's all moving in the right direction, and I look forward to the capital improvements budget, especially for the courthouse. But I did, I did have a question on the parks irrigation and water conservation, because as Counselor Baker's pointed out several times, that the city is, is the largest user of water, the city itself, and how that 2.55 can help in that area, if it's, if it's specifically, I cannot recall if it was for, you know, upgrading irrigation heads, like we're doing at the golf courses to save money, if it's projects like that, or if it's just simply, you know, turf removal around the edges of our parks that aren't utilized.
I can address that if you'd like me to. A lot of our irrigation infrastructure throughout the city, in our parks, is now, you know, 30 years old or more. And as you know, the original installation, the PVC pipes and some of the actual controllers are no longer manufactured, so we can't get replacement parts for some of these irrigation systems. So, yeah, they're leaking, they're not efficient, and they're very, like, I'm sure you've noticed how crispy our lawn is around City Hall. It's not because we haven't been trying to turn on the irrigation system here. It's just so old that it's not functioning. We get it going, the pump breaks, we have to fix it. But it's, so, yeah, there's a real need to create a, or to address this, going back to our oldest and least efficient irrigation systems and replace them. We've invested so much money in these landscapes, and especially the trees, I speak for the trees, they're really suffering throughout our whole city, and they really need to be irrigated if they're going to survive. So this is, this is good money to go after. So it, it costs about $40,000 an acre to replace the irrigation in a park. It's cheaper in golf courses, golf courses are different. That's about $30,000 an acre. So five-acre park, $40,000, a couple hundred thousand dollars per park, 64 parks, not all of which need new irrigation at this point. So, yeah, that's a, that's a very important invest, core service for our community, to keep it alive, to keep it looking beautiful, to keep it green, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, Sarah?
Um, well, on that parks note, yeah, I, I actually would love to see us make some progress in that. And I sat around in the Big Dry Creek Park over the weekend in dirt, that's, you know, basically a dirt soccer field. And so, yeah, just being able to make some progress. I also was driving around last week and was watching our medians being watered in the rain. So to have smart meters, you know, so that we aren't wasting water like that. So that's, that's something that I could support for sure. You know, and then the streets, yeah, just seeing how, you know, what we can actually accommodate through that. I am interested to see what we could do with the courthouse. So I don't know if it's like just, okay, burn it down or something, or just, you know, is there something you can do with it? And then, yeah, the, but I would say my priority would probably be around the parks irrigation and the streets. Regarding human services, I would be supportive of, like, reducing it a little bit from where it's currently posted at, or potentially spreading that number. Can we spread it over two years?
So it's intended to be utilized over three years.
Okay.
An additional $150,000 a year, starting in 2022.
Got it. Okay, well then, that would make sense. Okay, that's where I'm at.
So, Zadi, I haven't seen your hand.
Yeah, so a few comments. One, thanks for that clarification on the human services over three years. I think that extra 150, to me, I pretend to point, if, I'll let them know that it's not, after that third year, it's, it may go back. But I, I like the fact that it's spread out now that you mentioned that, versus a one-time. So that's good. And I would not be in favor of lowering that. I think our working families need, need as much help as they can get. So we should definitely keep that or increase. But next, on irrigation, I like the idea of changing out the irrigation. I'm curious about the water conservation programs. So are we saying that, so the committed is 10.4, meaning we only have 4 million, 4 million left to play with, right? And we're trying to choose what we're going to do? I would definitely want to see some water conservation programs in there, some money towards that. And outside of this, from a recycling standpoint, I think this could be a good opportunity to address our recycling issues with overutilized, underfunded, right? So if there's some money that we can put towards our facilities there, I think, Jody, you, city manager, you were mentioning that there's a, you had a new plan for a centralized facility. So we have the four, but to have a centralized one that can help with this overutilization issue that we have, I just think we need much more attention to divert more waste towards recycling than we do today. So I would like to see maybe something on recycling, and definitely water conservation and irrigation. Outside of this, this may not be popular with this council, but I would, I would definitely want to see some kind of direct financial payment. When I think about the last couple of years with COVID, there's a huge demand or a need really for working families who have been overworked, underpaid, they've lost jobs, they're working three, four jobs. Lots of cities are doing this with their ARPA money, where they're giving direct financial payments. So something that it could be income qualified, or some kind of criteria that we put on it, but it's just a way of giving some relief, because people are still suffering. We're still in the pandemic, we're not over that yet, and they just need some kind of breather. So that's what I would advocate for.
Counselor Baker.
Yeah. Basically, all we have is $4 million. So most of the numbers in the originally allocated column, they're zero. They got to go, because there's only $4 million left. So we're dividing up $4 million. And Mayor Pro Tem was absolutely right. We were told that there may not be the capacity in streets and roads to use all the money. So that's a thing where we need to return. And don't we have, don't we plan on replacing our irrigation systems? Don't we have a big chunk of money every year specifically for that? I mean, this is a one-time deal. And we haven't planned for that? You know, it's like, schools don't plan that the buildings get old and need to be renovated?
Brand new town, so I can't really comment to exactly that. But I can say that the irrigation systems and the playgrounds, many of them throughout the city are getting to the point where they must be replaced.
Well, everything wears out. That's just a fact of life. If I miss your door, don't we plan for that in our budget?
No, we don't have a capital plan for those long-term, smaller project assets, similar to the courthouse, as we described. You know, we're accumulating a plan, and we'll need to make a long-term financial sustainability choice, but short-term needs come to the table as well. So the answer is no, we don't have a column for each park, each irrigation system, its estimated replacement costs, escalation, et cetera. Yep, that's the answer to that.
And we don't have it all in an accumulative column, that we're going to replace a million dollars worth of sprinkler system.
Correct.
Maybe, maybe we shouldn't allocate any more of it, because that's, that's crazy to me that we haven't planned. I mean, don't we have a replacement plan for the police station and the city hall? Because they're going to need to get renovated at some time.
Well, I think the municipal court's an example to that. We, we don't have, we're not consistently either pay as you go or anticipating borrowing and replacing.
There it is, there. Don't worry about it.
Let's see your hand up.
For me, it's, it's the one-time pieces with the explanation of what parks needs. I understand that, streets, but I would add sidewalks, because maybe we can get concrete. I know both are terrible, but I know we have a list of sidewalks that need those connections in some parts of our city that really could use that boost. So I would hope they would look at that, but if it's not feasible, just say so. As far as the HSB money, we have to remember, we're a city, we're not a county, and I sometimes struggle that we have any money going out for HSB, but, and it's, it's just because we're a different animal than a county. So what I would rather see is something more sustainable for our nonprofits, and whoever does get money from what we have to give, that the 10, 15, whatever the number is that get money, that we commit to our communication team, here's these organizations. We want to know their story, we want to know where the volunteer components are, we want people to know what they do, how they do it, what, what our community gains from them, so that we are helping get the volunteers. We're helping get a new money base for them. We're helping people that have time to volunteer, that want to volunteer, find their niches and go and help. And to me, that would be broadening those organizations more than handing them the money that we have to divvy up, that's so small anyway. It's sort of like, we don't want to just give them the fish. We want to teach people about so that they will go and support, because that will be more sustainable for those organizations than coming to us for whatever we have to break up with all of the requests. So I'm not, and because it's, this is a one-time money, I don't care if it's over three years. Once you've set that for three years, they're going to expect it, and I don't want to set that expectation. So I'm not for that one, but I, I just really am for the streets, the infrastructure, the, it makes sense for the water stuff, if we can get better water. As everybody said, we're, we're the most user of water. So let's make it less with the more efficient ways of watering. I know, once we got a watering system, it was amazing, having been a hose dragger for 47 years, that it did change, and we're more efficient. We have the gauge, so when it rains, it doesn't water the next mornings. That's where I'm at. Do you have any consensus, city manager?
Do you want to, need any clarifications, Chris, or if you've got, we've got enough direction, we could put something back together and bring it back in, once we clarify with our streets team? I, I would clarify, you know, there's two different funding types that we've been talking about tonight for streets. The 1.2, sorry, the, the 1.29 million from earlier is ongoing funding, so that's annual, that will be an annual uplift. This is one-time funding. That, we'll look at the one-time funding to see how much of that we can, we can accomplish, and then bring that back, back to you as part of our report back.
Yeah, I think I, I heard from a number of you, the first priority is around streets maintenance and potentially concrete also. So I think that the critical conversation we'll be having is with curtain, curtain, and folks in streets.
And if, if the court system, any piece of it fits in there, I'm okay with that, because I know that's a big, a big need. If you're good, we're good. If not, say so, or forever hold your peace.
Sorry, so what, what was the N? So we're cutting it, HSB?
I would make it zero.
I would make it zero.
So are we saying we only want the streets? Is that what this N was?
Well, the streets, irrigation, maybe some of the court and.
So which ones? Court and streets? Or, so what was the summary of all of this, is my question?
They're going to go, and we don't know if that's even feasible to put all the money into streets because of the asphalt issues. So they're going to go talk some more, get resources, so that they're making good decisions and come back to us, is what I heard.
Is everyone generally in consensus that streets money to spend the next two years? I'm going to expand that slightly to save, like, summer of '23 and summer of '24, getting there.
Rich, are you okay with the streets over the next two years? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, it's going so late. Proclamations.
Well, I'm of the opinion that as long as they're a good citizen, I'll make pro.
Different pop.
Yes, I know.
Talking about proclamations, I have one that I got in the mail. June is Bike Month, and we, I know we have both commuting solutions and NADA, and they would probably love, I think our Bike Day is Wednesday, June 22. So is there anybody opposed to doing a proclamation for Bike Month?
I will second that.
Okay, so I'll give this to you at the end.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Staff is coming before you tonight to look for direction on just the proclamation process. In the past, what we have done is if we get a new request, we poll council, and they tell us what we want to do. And then there's a list that was attached here, packet of reoccurring proclamations. Actually, this is all the proclamations that were between 2016 and 2020, and a number of them are reoccurring. We thought council might want to look at those and reevaluate and see if they still align with what council would like. and see if they still align with what council would like to proclaim. And in addition to those parts of the proclamation process, we would also like to explore, if you're interested in presenting proclamations in any other format besides council meetings, for example, coming early once a month and taping the proclamations, people can receive them and it still be posted, or going to events, and I know that that's happened in the past, going to events and presenting them there, or even just signing a proclamation and presenting it to groups. So those are the areas we're looking for direction in.
What's the purple?
The purple means it's reoccurring, it happens every year.
Oh, okay. Are all of them, because I saw some I didn't recognize, are all within Westminster, or have somebody here in Westminster?
I believe, I would tell you, I am not 100% sure. Yes, I believe that they were either brought forth by a board, or they were brought forth by a resident usually. I cannot say that with 100% certainty, but that's where most of these came from.
I was in a meeting this week, and my heart sank because it is, it was, the week we're in, it started Friday this week, is National Nurse Week, and of all years to have done something with what they've been through for two years. So I said to that organizer at the hospital, I said, put on your calendar next April to contact the city so we can do proclamations. So that's the reason I didn't know exactly. Those kinds of things that hit our city and our citizens, get something from those folks, I just think those are the kinds of things I certainly want to say thank you for being.
Did I see this goes through 2020, and obviously from 2020, we didn't do a ton. In 2021, though, we did some, right?
Yes, yeah.
The one I'm curious about, and trying to remember if we did last year, but I want to make sure I at least state that I'd like to see it come back this year, is Constitution Week, and I can't think of the name of the group that usually comes for that.
D A R.
Yeah, yep. But I think that that's one that I certainly want to make sure that we do.
They always have trouble.
You got a cloud, is there anywhere else that might be coming in?
Well, we just tonight decided that we're doing the, what's the title that you decided on gun?
Gun Death Awareness.
Gun Death Awareness, that's coming. Sorry, I didn't have the ones that are upcoming. Traditionally, oh, Pride Month comes in June, Juneteenth comes in June, Immigration Heritage Month comes in June. Let's see. National Trails Day usually comes in June. Those are the big ones that have happened over the years. So those are the ones that are upcoming that I know about.
So by saying yes to the reoccurring ones, that you don't have to poll us?
Yeah, if you want to take the reoccurring ones as a whole, I'm happy to do that, I just want to counsel.
Well, and I want to say, if we don't get a, if we don't get somebody asking us for it, I don't want to just automatically do it, because it could be like tonight, we don't have anybody here for it.
Somebody emailed and asked for that one.
Yeah. No, that was a national organization.
Could be reported, like if they ask us?
Okay, and do we want to do them at council? Do we want to just publish them?
Have that human interaction just to recognize?
I think so, because like groups like SRC, some people don't even know who Senior Resource Center is, and the amount of work that they do, and the aging population is huge, and so it's an opportunity to say, hey, folks who joined us tonight, here's a group you can get behind and help sustain, because, I mean, they do a ton of work, and they're the ones like CASA, and Waltham House usually comes. So depending on what it is, I think it's nice to do it here.
Okay, like, should we make the rule that if you want it done at council meeting, you have to have a representative here, otherwise we just publish it? I think that's.
That would be fine with me. Do we want to put a maximum number for a meeting? We try to work through that. We're usually working a month ahead and splitting it between our two meetings.
And there have been, there were, at one point, we did try to limit it to like three to four per meeting, but sometimes there, it's hard to prioritize them, and that would be left up to council.
You guys make a decision, we can go home.
I don't like hard limits on life. That's when something comes along that we really, really want, and then they get really upset, like, sorry, we had a limit.
I know.
I like the idea of having a representative or publish, but no limits and just.
I like that. The other thing that would be helpful, Abby, in my mind, if everybody agrees, is just like maybe the month before, if you know the reoccurring ones are coming, that we have them, because there was, well, like the one you did tonight, I mean, maybe the inclusivity board would have wanted to come, so at least then we could at least tell our boards and commissions, hey, these ones are going to happen, so people want to join us to celebrate or.
And when we get the national ones, like that one was, they sent a book and everything. And I don't want to put this on Abby, but they need to know, they should have a local organization, otherwise, why are they asking for a proclamation?
Bruce said he was going to start one after.
Rich, any other comments about this that you can think of?
No, I think that's great thoughts on representative being here. And then, if it's not local and it's not a representative going to be here, I'm not sure the point of even publishing it, because that takes staff time, too. But yeah, sometimes it's frustrating when we get a bunch piled in there, but these are, you know, if they are local and they are asked for and they're showing up for the meeting, you know, Counselor Emin said that best, that's the human touch and the human part. Never a bad way to kick off a meeting, you just hope it doesn't take an hour.
May I ask what makes it reoccurring?
That it's happened more than once. I don't think I have enough historical knowledge, can you speak to how they become reoccurring and why they're reoccurring?
I think most of them are, have been requested multiple years by either the same group, knowing that they had it posted a year before, or given a number come from boards and commissions, and they sort of get on a cycle with their staff, where you're going to do them, because it became important at some point, and they want to continue them.
I just assumed, I wanted to get that last, like, if I brought forward a proclamation that I would like to see, and then I'm no longer on council, and then it continues, and it's like, is that appropriate for it to be? I don't know. Do you see what I'm saying, like, what makes it become a recurring thing?
Yeah, and that's why I would also like encourage council to always review them, because we definitely want to proclaim things that align with council's vision.
I think if you had that list a month ahead, then I'm sure if somebody had a problem, we're not shy to raise our hand.
Counselor Izadi, anything else?
Nope.
Counselor Nermal?
Nope.
Mayor Protem? Are you good?
Yes, thank you very much.
Here's Bicycle Month.
You just need you then put your request in, my birthday to have a proclamation, two years in a row.
Okay.
I'll live in perpetuity.
11/28 in this meeting is adjourned.